All right, if I get everybody to take a seat please, we're gonna go ahead and get started. All right, so, good morning.
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 Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
All right, come on, the public's watching. Just want to welcome you all to Wolfback Green, I've been here before and done things. But, welcome to your council retreat. Mayor, I'll turn it over to you to convene yourselves and we'll get started.
Yes, I call the Charlottesville City Council special meeting for a retreat to order. We have a role, everyone is here accounted for, Madam Clerk. So, we're good to go.
Thank you, sir. So, today is August 15th. And I've been thinking about this day for a long time, so I am so glad that it's here and I can't wait for August 17th, when I'm moving on to something else. But just again, wanted to thank you for patience and your cooperation and coordination for getting to this day. I think this is an important moment for council in being able to talk about priorities and strategizing together. It's important for us to do that as we move into a transition, as we start the new year. And I think it's just a good opportunity for us to just check in and see that we're on the same page and where we may not be, we can try to get back to the same page. Our peanut gallery in the back, made up of staff members from various positions that are here. One won't even see what y'all talk about, help if they can, but also just interested in seeing how we're doing some of the conversations that we're doing right now in moving the city organization forward. I engaged an individual who you'll be working with to help me work in the city manager's office. And he came in about four months ago, I think it was, and he's been helping us to focus on us, the team that is the city manager's office team, top of the organization, working with council, setting strategy and vision in motion to implement your vision overall. And it's been an interesting ride, and if you don't know Joshua, you'll soon get to feel what that's like. But it has been quite a ride, it has been extremely informative, it has been challenging, and it has been all the things that I probably could not have thought of at one time is what I found in the experience that we've been able to have. And what I also did was ask him, can you come and bring that to council? And let them feel what that is and work with us to help us set ourselves on a path that we can deliver more of what it is that we're trying to deliver in service to our larger community. So, he agreed to do that. And the goal would be that we continue to find ways to integrate them into conversations that we have with staff so that then it gets down through the workforce and we are implementing with this larger vision of human centered first, because that's what he's gonna talk about a lot. Human centered is about the people, process is important, it comes, and y'all know that's not me. I talk process all the time, people first, and then you get into the process world. So, I'm gonna invite Josh to join us. Josh is head of the spill team, he is a ball of energy, as you're soon to see, and he is here to help us. And he's helping us by challenging us to think and to consider, and not today to decide or tomorrow to decide, but to help inform the decision and how you even make the decision. So, I think it's gonna be important for us to appreciate what comes to light through this conversation, so. Oh, all right. How y'all doing?
Great.
Yeah, good, all right, I'm excited to be here. Thank you for that, Sam. I was like, was it heartwarming, was it a dig? I don't really know which one it was. It was right up the mixture of both. But I'm Joshua, I'm part of the spill team. I kinda wanna talk about a little bit of who we are and that is gonna play a big part in how we function. Absolutely, so they are, who we are, what we do should go hand in hand at all times. So, as a group of designers, we're a group of speakers, strategists, facilitators, and workshop designers. It is a lot of going into design and your experience for the next like day and a half, a lot of, raise your hand if you've been a part of that? Like, it has been a lot of work to design the space, the conversation, the content, everything matters. But, design sometimes can be like an oversexy youth word, I kinda like hate that it's sometimes untouchable. It literally just means to create stuff. That's it, like to create strategies, to create the conversation, to create the tools that we use today. So, that's kinda what we do. What's human centered design? It is people first and process second. The best way I can explain it is a little bit of shifting the way to be thinking. You can either create a process and stuff people into it, or you can learn enough about people who create a process around them. One is faster, one is easier, but those people most likely at the end of the day say, "I don't feel like this was created, it wasn't tailored in any particular way." That is because we created a process when most likely just stuffed people into it. And we got commitment, I mean we got compliance versus commitment. I think we're wanting commitment, I think we can all agree to that. So, there's a process to actually create commitment, just like mom's frame of recipe. She has an actual process for doing that frame of recipe. If we shortcut it, it does not taste like mom's, no matter how far we move on it. There's a process for it. So, you're probably like, what does that even mean? Let me ask you, if, I usually introduce it this way. If I were to say that I do something for you, what comes to mind? If I do it for you, like, if I do it for you, what comes to mind? Look what I did for you.
It's a favor.
Favor, okay. Thank you. Thank you, okay, what comes to mind?
A gift.
A gift, yeah, look what I did for you, absolutely. What else, what comes to mind? I do something for you.
Obligation.
Okay, okay, absolutely. Obligation, thank you, a gift. Those are great words, kinda like, you were in my mind, you were in my heart, you were maybe reference. All very good intentions, like, look what I did for you. Like, Lloyd, look what I did for you, look, look what I did for you. Thought about you, look what I did for you. And you're like, man, that's super thoughtful, thank you, I think you said thank you, right? All right, let me ask you another question. If I do it with you, what words come to mind?
Partner.
Partner?
Together.
Together?
Cooperation.
Cooperation?
Friendship.
Friendship? What else, what else comes to mind? Anyone else? What do you think? I'm always gonna panel, like, you know, what do you think? If I come, if I do it with you, we do it with each other, what would come to mind?
I mean, I think what others said, just together, like joint effort.
Yeah, yeah, joint effort, yeah, absolutely, absolutely. You're alongside and collaboration, shared, contributed, you're a partner. Those are completely different words, right? Than for, I mean, they're your words, your words are absolutely completely different. You didn't use these words to describe for. You were there, you were involved, you were part of the actual process. Are we at least clear on the difference between doing something for someone and doing something with someone?
Yeah.
Right, per your words, right? It basically means bringing people in the room, that's kinda why you're here. And also believing that one size does not fit all. It has to be done with individuals, if I change the people you do it with, we have to learn about them. One size does not fit all, right? So, it's the value that flows with the right people in the right room, that you're in the right way. And the right people is something I want to like really double stamp on. It is, you just can't bring people in the room to bring people in the room, that doesn't really work. What are you trying to achieve? Why am I trying to achieve it? Where are we trying to go? Then you select your people to do that. What the right people mean with the right knowledge, skills, and abilities. If you've seen anything so far, it's kinda why I'm here, why you're in the room. Like, you're the right people for today. Human centered design also makes sure that what we create doesn't collect dust. Why? Because you contributed, you were a part of, we did it alongside. So, accountability looks a little different, because if something doesn't happen, I was like, hey, we built that. I think already you heard me tell you, they were your words that you used with versus for. That's already like accountability, like you described it this way, they were your words. So, accountability looks different when we look at things sitting on the shelf or not, right? So, with comes with a deep level of pressure as well, because you're like, I do have to contribute, I do need to be a part of, I actually am part of the building of the actual thing. So, with, that's what it means. But you have to be good at navigating, facilitating, and cultivating people's experiences until you learn, think, and do. That's actually how you're skilled at, with. But it's, human centered design is a way of thinking, valuing, working, that challenge is doing for someone versus with them. You gave me completely different words of what that meant, right? But I kinda wanna break it down for you for a moment. If I removed your ability to have a deep understanding, this is a little bit of the process of human centered design. Let's just say I put a challenge in front of you and I put something for you to solve, and I removed your ability to have a deep understanding. And so, I was like, explore some ideas and materialize and bring them to life. But I removed your ability to have a deep understanding, what would be the outcome?
Floundering.
Yeah, wouldn't be sustainable.
Wouldn't be sustainable, floundering. I removed your ability to have a deep understanding, you got enough with a deep understanding.
Cold.
Cold, yeah. We're exploring ideas but bringing them to life, exploring ideas, bringing them to life. Let's play with something else. What if I removed your ability to explore multiple ideas? So, you got your deep understanding and you just land on an idea and you bring that to life. And I removed your ability to explore multiple perspectives, multiple ideas, creative solutions. So, got a deep understanding, let me land on my idea and bring it to life. What would the outcome be?
I'm right.
I'm right biased, right, naturally leaning in, I would agree, yeah? Yeah, first thing we thought of, first idea, yep. What else? What would you say?
Leaving people out.
Leaving people out, right, yeah? Who's not here, right, asking the question, yeah? What else? If I removed your ability to kind of explore multiple ideas? What would you say?
You might get something that didn't work.
Yeah?
If you've not gone through the process of thinking about it and you're just focusing just on, let's do something.
Sure, absolutely, yeah, I agree with that. Let's play with another idea. You have deep understanding and you've been able to explore multiple creative solutions, multiple creative ideas, but we're not really materializing anything, we're not really like bringing anything to life. What's the, what's the outcome? Great understanding and deep multiple perspectives and multiple creative ideas, but we've not implemented or materialized.
Going around and around and around.
We're in a loop, okay?
Lack of action.
Lack of action, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Budget constraints.
Budget constraints, you're about to name everything, right?
The Belmont Bridge.
Okay, all right. So, we have examples apparently, okay, okay. But at the end of the day, they play a big part. What I have a deep understanding about allows me to explore multiple ideas. Those ideas allow me to materialize something, and what I materialize is check to and against what I understand. Thus a cycle. It kinda looks like this, there's a deeper level of it, but I'm gonna ask you all to just hang out with me in the space of confusion, no, I'm kidding. But I actually want you to hang out with me in the space of here, just understand, explore, materialize. For the next day and a half, that's where we're gonna live. We're gonna live in exploring, understanding, materializing, okay? And I'm gonna unclutter it. It's not about what we build, create, or solve, human centered design will stress on how, which increases sustainability. And you just explained to me why it's important to have a deep understanding, then explore multiple ideas, but then you just explained how we should go about solving a problem. And if we didn't go about it that way, you explained also some potential hitups and some actual projects and examples that you have. So, just hang out here in these three with me for the next day and a half, cool? With me?
Yep.
Cool? So, how we doing? It looks like this. How we implement human centered design, what is this? Anybody know what this is?
Workshop.
Workshop.
It's a workshop. What happens in a workshop? They even have dad, uncle, aunt, mom, whatever had a workshop? Anybody, yeah? Okay. What happens inside the workshop? It's sort of like the curse words, we hear someone yelling like, do the thing. What happens?
Hit your thumb sometime.
Yeah?
Problem solving.
Problem solving.
Repair.
Repair, hurt yourself sometime, breaking stuff, yeah? Ideas, thoughts?
Creativity.
Creativity, sometimes dad wants to go away, or uncle or mom wants to go away into the workshop. But workshop is how we strategize. All the things you just made, mentioned is how we're going to actually strategize. And so, we're gonna learn, think, and do all at the same time in that space. That's what happens in the workshop space. There's learning, thinking, and doing. It kinda looks like this, actually looks like this. You might see some of your hometown heroes in here. Might see some people you recognize. But this is what it visually looks like. There's some cool people we've been able to work with throughout the years. Been in this community for well over 11 years. And so, been able to work with some pretty cool people locally, internationally, and been able to do some fun stuff, host some really, really great conversations in this community, specifically with leadership. But it's been a good time, you might even see some people that you know. Look how young Chris looks there, right? Like, it's a baby picture of Chris, right? Like, Chris, I think I saw you, you know, 15 years ago. But, yeah, been able to do a really good, a really good work. This impact, this conversation we've already started having has been pretty fun. It's usually, at the end, it's gonna be a good time, there's smiles at times, I promise. I will even do this post for you when we're, when we're done, I promise. But I am asking this, while we're in the room together, we're gonna shift the way that we think about some things. Hopefully, in this conversation alone, you've already experienced that a little bit. That you're like, man, I can see where this is going, and Sam, does the window unlock because I wanna bail? Or, I see where this is going and this is probably gonna do this in our time together. Anytime we work with a group, there's usually a challenge, a question that we ask. And so, what would it look like if the city council used human centered design to better inform and direct the city manager's office towards strategic impact? This is the question I hope to solve by the end of our time together. Cool? With me?
Yeah.
Is that a big question? Anybody's like, that's a big question, dude, like, I'll even, that's a huge question. But this is what we're going after for the next day and a half. With me?
Yes.
Cool? I have this up on the wall, so we will be able to stare at it and remember while we're here. So, we're gonna stare at this big design question throughout the next day and a half. This will make remember what we're solving for. So, if by any chance you find yourself detouring, getting off track a little bit, this is our North Star. We are going to solve for this question. At the end of the day, it's about direction setting to help inform decision making. And I wanna kinda explain what that is. And so, thank you for hanging out with me, because we're setting the tone for the next like day and a half and then we're gonna rock and roll. So, direction is around you understanding where it is. And you're gonna hear a lot of its, you're gonna hear about budget, you're gonna hear about the community, you're gonna hear about strategic priorities. It's that I'd like to know where it is. It is all about current place and the status of those things. I really, really, really highly encourage, the thing I ask them to tell you to bring three things. Comfortable shoes and a sweater and paper pen. Like, take notes, take notes, capture your notes, categorize your notes. It's gonna be really important, I promise you, as you understand where it is, we're gonna use that on day two, okay? Remember, everything's connected, understand, explore, materialize, it's all actually connected. What you understand will be used, I promise. So, take notes. And you're also gonna get to explore what is and what could be within those categories as well. So, we're gonna understand where it is and then we're going to explore what is and what could be. Cool? And that is about opportunity and possibility. All right, here's what we're gonna get into today. First, it's a jam packed day, I promise you, it's a pretty high intense day. You're gonna understand where it is, strategic priorities, community survey, financial budget. We're gonna do a reflection and design exercise, so I'm gonna ask you to reflect on that information, which is why it's important to capture notes. We're gonna have lunch about 12:15-ish, is that okay? 12:15, I don't know if anybody's regimented at lunchtime, but 12:15 is okay? We're gonna talk about some top priorities as well. We're gonna have another reflection exercise, and then we're out about 4:40-ish, is that okay?
Yep.
Makes sense? That's what we're gonna accomplish. While still pursuing this beautiful North Star. All right, so the way we're gonna use human centered design to accomplish this is we're gonna understand where it is, day one. Remember, we are heading, this is what we're going for, direction setting, right? That's kinda like to inform and to direct. Direction setting is what we're gonna try to materialize. We'll start with day one around understanding where it is. And then, what is and what could be to help with direction setting. Makes sense?
Yes.
Cool? All right. So, I wanna talk about bookends for a second. If you're a dog person, you have these bookends, if you're a cat person, you probably have these bookends. But I wanna talk about bookends for a moment. Direction setting to help inform decision making is around where we're going. This is the actual direction setting as a whole, it's where we're going, getting there, and how we know. Which is around focus, strategy, execution, and measuring. So, why I said bookends is because, it is, these might be your bookends, but it is important to understand this, these are the bookends to that whole process. Where we're going and how we know, measuring it. Strategy and execution is the CMO's job. Their goal is to figure out how, how we're gonna make this happen, strategy, that's where you see budget, that's where you see all those other conversations. But, direction setting, you're the North Star, like you set the direction, where we're headed, and how we know we got there. With that direction, we hand that off, pass the baton, to the individual responsible to for strategy and execution. So, you all are direction setting, with me? Cool?
Yeah.
Awesome. All right, and that's why we don't wanna, we don't wanna, we're gonna hand all this in between stuff to CMO's office, okay? Those are we're gonna do. Unless you all want that, let me know, we can, we got strategy documents we can hand you, but I think for the most part, CMO's office like, and be the bookends for us, please, and we will do strategy and execution. Where we're going, council, and how do we know we got there? Cool?
Awesome.
All right, direction setting, uniform, decision making, as long as we agree, on the same page, we're good to go. We're gonna see this a million times. But here's the ground rules for workshopping. Ask you, what is the purpose of a retreat? What is the purpose of a retreat?
To get away from the hurly burly day life.
Yes, can we get like snaps or poetry snaps? Well said, well said.
This is a new snap, sir.
Yeah, to get away, I feel like there was a breath in there, like to get away. Retreat is around, it's supposed to be commish, supposed to be some planning and some strategy that kinda go in it. So, I wanna kinda talk about some of the benefits. So, you can basically retreat from the demands and chaos of the everyday, absolutely. Virtual high five for that. Especially if you plan to plan and strategize. I think it's really impossible to do that in the middle of chaos, to think clearly, to set direction. I think that's super impossible. If I played a lot of noise right now and I tried to talk to you and give you instruction, you would say, I can't hear you. Can't hear what? I can't hear instruction, I can't hear direction, I can't think about what you're saying, Joshua, I can't even absorb it. Why? Because it's noisy. There's a lot going on. So, this retreat is to, yes, get away, and to be able to confront the demands and chaos of the everyday. Retreat is a place where direction and decisions are made. You see what I did there? See what I did there, where direction and decisions are made? It's to assist in closing the gaps between who we are and who we want to be. The ability to sit and think of those things, who we are and where we wanna be. Let's go retreat and think about that and plan around that and strategize around that. Retreat should be a first response and not a last resort. When there is chaos and when there's something big, you should be able to say, hold on a second. I need to go think, plan, get into the calm where I can hear, and strategize. It should be a first response and not a last resort. And so, a retreat, a successful retreat needs both hope and discipline and focus. So, hope, where we're going, and focus, let's get there, let's, let's focus on that. So, where it is, is around current place and status, I wanna remind you that. I wanna talk to you really quick about some of the ground rules. When we start talking about where it is, you're gonna hear a lot of distorted things. You're gonna hear a lot of past tense, you're gonna hear a lot of things that have occurred or where something is. I want you to know that if you hear that, and it's not the easiest thing, this is called the rubber band effect. A rubber band, you would know, you pull it back to shoot it further faster. So, if by any chance you were pulled back to remember something, or you were pulled back to experience something, the purpose of that, reason for that in any presentation today, or even tomorrow, is to shoot you further faster, okay? We're not pulling something back to stay there, that's called being stuck in a moment. We're pulling something back to, so you can be encouraged to shoot further faster. Cool? This is gonna be huge, huge, especially in day one. Understand and listen, take notes, please, 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 take notes. I don't know, I'm gonna hear you say that a lot properly. Write notes, not these types of notes, like, this is like call me, slide across the thing. But you ever took notes before, and you ever took notes and you went back and looked at it, like, what did I write there? Like, what in the world? So, please take organized notes. Please take notes in a way that you can reflect on them and know what you have. Because I'm, I'm literally, I'm giving you heads up, I'm gonna ask you to reflect on your notes to pull out some answers. Hold loosely what you know. I think, Lloyd, you said at the very beginning, that if I don't get an opportunity to explore, then I land on like the first thing, me, right? Hold loosely what you know, hold it, but hold it loosely. We are gonna share out at times, there are moments where we're gonna hear each other. And that's gonna require a level of respect, this type of respect, the only person that's saying it the best. But, we're gonna talk about respect in the room in a sense of when we're hearing each other as well, sharing out. What could be is obviously day two, and that's where we're gonna workshop. That's where it's gonna look like this. In day two, you're also gonna see a lot of working together alone. What that means is collectively that we're independent but not independent of one another. There are gonna be moments where I actually do some independent work. That independent work, I promise you, is connected to the whole. Human centered design was not linear, it was in a circle. It was understanding, explore, materialize, and keep going. So, if I ask you to do something, please, please understand, it is connected to something else. That's why I keep hinting, uh-uh, take notes, because it is connected to a bunch of other things as well, okay? We're gonna idea dump, I'm gonna ask you to do that, we're gonna ask you to come up with some ideas. Any overthinkers? Who would be, anyone openly admit that they're an over thinker, right? Okay, so if you hear like the tapping, like, that's like someone kinda overthinking a little bit, just not the most, like, you got this, you got this. So, encourage your overthinkers. We're gonna go deep and wide as well. There's the ability to think and participate in a process that allows you to go deep in thought and also cover a lot of ground as well. So, we're gonna go deep and wide. We are gonna decide quickly. There's a visual timer and I'm gonna have that going on. There's something to be said around visual time, it's saying I have that much time to show up with my idea, my strategy, whatever it may be. So, we're gonna decide quickly. I'm gonna ask and stick those ideas, tomorrow, we're gonna move around the room, and I'm gonna ask you to put them in certain places. Anyone nervous?
No, good.
No, you're good, okay, all right, all right, I love it. All right, I don't think we should be nervous, because you I think are the right people to be in the room. I think you have the right knowledge, skills, and abilities to do this work with, with me and with each other. So, I wouldn't be nervous, you're the right people. We're gonna finish strong, I promise you all. Here's my participation expectations, okay? One, my promise to you and my ask of you, I am going to give you everything I have in a day and a half. I'm gonna like, to the point where you're like, dude, you gave it, you laid it all out on the board, all out on the wooden floor. I'm going to give you everything I have in a day and a half, I shouldn't ask the same of you. That's it, I'm gonna give you everything that I have, and I shouldn't ask the same. Show up, show up for me, show up for you, I'm gonna show up for me and I'm gonna absolutely show up for you. I think I was thinking about you before y'all even entered the room, had a lot of hours dedicated to thinking about you before you came in the room. I'm going to give you everything that I have, okay? Tech on the table, I think you're taking notes and that's your way, so super cool. But, keep your devices out, only if you have this laptop. If you have this laptop, keep it out, I wanna see it, we all wanna take pictures with you and with it, it's an ancient artifact. And from a phone perspective, use your phone, only if you have this phone, because I also wanna like document you and post you and say, like, this person has this phone still working. But just be respectful with that, we're gonna have breaks where you can actually take breaks, restrooms here, be able to go out and take a phone call, email, things like that. But I'm gonna actually try to honor that break as well and preserve your brain power. But, at the end of the day, I'm asking you to lean in, what is this, by the way?
Trust fall.
Trust fall, absolutely. This guy, hopefully he's got the strength to be able to do that. I'm gonna be this guy, okay? I'm gonna be the, the person that uses all creativity and strategy. And my hope is that you lean in and you, you trust fall with me, okay? That's the only way this will work, absolutely. So, he's gonna be a superhero at the end of all this. But, lean in basically and be curious, be aware, and be attentive. I'm asking you to do those things in the room with me today, cool? All right, when you get breaks, I'm gonna ask you to be present when you're present and I'm asking you to take a break when it's time to take a break. We, everyone in the camera as well, are, will say we're taking a break and then go work. It's not taking a break. Taking a break is to be able to put your brain on pause. Retreating, so to speak, you're gonna wanna retreat from the retreat at a moment, take your break. Honor your break. Don't put your brain to work here and then go out and take a break and put your brain to work there. Breathe, walk, sit, relax, enjoy, laughing with someone as well, okay? Try to at least, please. And just remind you, this is what we're gonna be working through. All right, where it is. You're gonna, first thing you're gonna hear about where it is is around the strategic priority refresher you're gonna hear from Sam, he's going to walk through. So, please, if you, if you're taking notes or you're taking a header of anything, say, "I'm about to hear where the strategic priorities are," or at least a refresher on them, and then take some notes underneath that. Each item on the table, I'll tell you what to do with, so we'll have an experience with those. But, from a note perspective, please categorize your notes. This section of where it is is around the strategic priority refresher, got some notes. This section, where we're around the community survey, take some notes. This section, where around like the financial update, categorize it, take some notes. It's really, really important for you to know where your notes are, I'm going to ask you to look at those, cool? All right, Sam, after you, sir.
So, throughout, what did you say?
I told you, it's going to be a lot.
Yeah.
A lot going on. Myself, James, and Ashley will be participating during this retreat, and Josh put me in a very tight spot and said, "Sit down and be quiet." So, I'm practicing too. All right, my section is just to remind you of what are the strategic priorities that you set. You have nine priorities and a commitment, and I'm going to remind you of what those are. And I chose to do it in a way that I'm just giving you your words back, so that's the refresher part of it. The goal is to just take you back to where you were in 23, 2023, when we had you approve the strategic framework, which are the nine strategic outcome areas and the commitment to JNA. All of that, I'm going to throw back at you, but I've done it in what I consider to be a creative way, and I did not leave you out, because I know you weren't here when that was done. Gotcha. So, just to remind you, the council's vision is to be a place where everyone thrives. We are saying that often, we are saying it everywhere, we're putting it up in the building so that people can gravitate to it, that they can appreciate it, because you said that is the vision for the city organization and for the city of Charlottesville. Here are your nine strategic outcome areas with your commitment. Just reminding you of what you said were important things that you wanted to make sure that when we put a bunch together, we don't lose sight of this. When we're working on projects, that we don't lose sight of this. When we're thinking about what is it that will help us understand that this city organization is doing its job, it's in the frame of looking through these strategic outcome areas. That is what the conversation internally has been about, that is what I have tried to make sure that I stress and impress upon the team, the leadership team at the top to hear, this is where we focus, because this is what council has asked us to focus on. This is the thing, these are the things that we need to do to help our community. So, I'm going to give you quotes from you to me. I decided not to do a whole lot of work, I just went back into my notes, see how? Point out the fact that Josh says, "Take notes, notes are important," I found notes. Because when we were doing the work of strategic outcome areas, I made sure that I found in each of the conversations where we ask you, "What is your priority on that subject?" Over and over and over, you might begin to remember some of those moments where I was asking you that. I kept all of it, I didn't know why I was keeping all of it until he gave me this assignment. So, I'm just going to run through these, I'm not going to read all of them to you, but they're going to pop up on the screen just so you can see. This is what you said and why these became strategic outcome areas. And Natalie, I Googled through your campaign as you were speaking to the public as to why they should elect you, and I matched you into some of these so that you could be reflected in this justice.
Cool.
All right. So, you went into the archive, you went into her archive, brought it out, so, hopefully you don't regret. So, climate action, value innovative positions on climate, I think we know that you all appreciate it. Innovative positions, because we're having conversations like that. Climate impacts on the city and the region, I love the region word, because we have to remember that it's bigger than us. We're just a small piece in this big overall system. Economic prosperity, chances for people who are from here to stay here, we hear this a lot from our community at large. You hear it every time you go knock on a door, I'm sure. It's hard, that's why I reflect on the ideas, so why do you think economic prosperity? And everyone wants better than they have had. Organizational excellence, I have swallowed these two words, and I have probably made everyone tired of those two words, because I use it all the time. I love those two words. So, for those two words, not only is it now my northern star for inside of the city manager's office, we're trying to help the team appreciate why you chose that. I know you chose it because you want this to be a strong organization capable of meeting the needs of citizens of this community. That's what organizational excellence means, we fix things, we make it better. That's everybody's expectation. It's hard. What I also like about it is that we fix things, it doesn't say we fix everything. We can't be everything to everyone, so we have to remember that, and that's all a part of prioritizing. And we all know that this is community worth loving. I think we have done a lot to show that, and I think that's what we have to remember. But also know that this is here, because some of you are on this council, because you were worried about this. And in the worry about that, you decided to join and help reset that. And I've been speaking to you as much as I can about how we're doing that, and I have another presentation for you on Monday to demonstrate how we are. Partnerships, we should talk even when we disagree. You don't get anywhere if you don't talk it through. Even if you're fighting about it, you're still getting it out, because you're expressing whatever you feel. Hopefully, things work out. We should be willing to give a hand up, I think that comes out loud and clear, and the choices that we make and what we want to prioritize to talk about. Public safety, modern government supports in every way, I think what we're trying to say here is, we don't do policing like everywhere else. We want to be modern in our approach, we put people first. It's why we do community walks, it's why we're changing how we approach various things. Is it perfect? No, what is? We're trying to get there, and we're doing things differently. And we have turned things around, and it's just a reminder that's working. So, when you say public safety, we start there, but it's bigger than that. For me, it's really here. 2017 is no longer the barometer, we were better than that then, and can be better than that for good. It's a moment, something that happened, it doesn't have to be who we are, but there are a lot of people who still talk like this to who we are. It isn't incumbent on all of us to change that, and I think that's again, why public safety is there, because there was a big conversation about it. Recreation arts and culture, we want to be welcoming, not exclusionary, but we want to be what the magazines actually said we are. We're winning awards left and right. Chris Engle loves giving me the list of what we just got recognized for. What I hear in that statement is that, yeah, we want to actually live that out in every way that we can. We may have set a criteria to get selected for that, but are we really that all the time? I think that's really why recreation arts and culture matters. Housing consumes the conversation, a lot going on there. These are the things that you said about housing, I actually did limit to just three, I had five on there, because it's a lot. But, a home in a place that all residents will love and cherish. We know that, so we're striving to make possible. But we must maintain focus on those we're struggling, which is why we're not just simply producing housing, but also preserving housing opportunities. And a variety of housing choice, because what we know about people is that they don't want the same thing, and they don't need the same thing. But the goal of the government is to provide as much as we can, whether directly or through partnerships.
I recognize some of those.
Good. Transportation, I hope everybody is, we can be innovative, yes, we can, and we are. Cityville is on a journey, that's an understatement. But that's transportation in that more strategic visionary way. Connecting sidewalks, protecting bike lanes, improving bus frequency will bring Charlottesville into a more just and sustainable future. It's not focused on one thing, it's focused on multiple things. And that then also becomes, and how do you do all of it? How much can you do? Education, be a big enough choices. Employment opportunities for high school, age and beyond, so we're preparing them for what comes after. So, we've got to make sure that we take care of them when they're in the school, and that includes the building in which they learn. Today, your top tier is housing, transportation, and education. Our focus today, the visit conversation today and tomorrow, is housing, transportation, and education. But I just walked you through a list of seven other things, nine total things.
Sam, is that top tier in these three things, is that what we agreed to two years ago? Or is that your sense of what sort of bubble to the top right now?
So, that is what is shaking out to be your top tier. Because that is what you spend the most money on, that is what we're talking the most about, and that is what has just risen to the top. So, we're going to focus there, because these three right now appear to be driving everything else.
You're going to get to hear a lot more about those a little later as well.
One thing I want to make sure of is that you appreciate that, that it is landing with you the way it lands with us. This is what it feels like on our side, that it's these three topics. And what we're wanting to remind you is that there are nine on the list plus the commitment, so therefore there are ten things to invest, strategize, and work on, but these three are where we are. Your commitment to justice, equity, diversity, and inclusion, right now, is under attack. This gets us noticed by the individuals in Washington DC today. The question is, do we care to stay noticed, or do we just want to focus on the work? So, my challenge is, in this particular moment, is to ask you, does this say those four words, or does it say more than those four words? That's the question I'm asking. Senator, that everyone can and this government should see this at all times, no one is disposable. Harmony among new residents, we always do better when we all do better. Those are your words, things that you said, that's why you set the commitment. What I'm asking is, this is what, I'm telling you, this is what I hear. This is what we've been working on, this is what you've been accepting at this point, as to what a commitment really is for the city of Charlottesville. So, that I'm asking you, could we just live with the idea of a commitment to community prosperity, and then we can take the lens of what the feds and others are looking at, put that aside? Because that's about words, this is about action. Can we live with these actions? Can we live with this focus? Can we live with this as a true series of commitments that we will spend our time in and need? So, that's the question. Not asking for a decision today, I'm going to talk to you a little bit about it on Monday and show you what it actually looks like, because I'm assuming that you'd agree with me. We don't need to play in being targeted, we've got work to do. We've got people's lives to shape and change, and we don't need to lose the resources just because we're going to stick with justice, equity, diversity, and inclusion as the conversation is about the work. What are we doing? And that's really what I'm asking.
Could I ask a question?
Yes.
So, accessibility, that's not the strict sense of wheelchair, so.
Not at all, no.
I wonder if a different word might be access.
Yeah.
To prevent that.
Yeah.
I think we don't have to go too far down this road.
You're going to, write that down as a note, that's why you said, write it down as a note.
Yeah, I would be interested, again, we don't have to do it today or anymore even, I'd be interested in a conversation with you that actually 101, 211, whatever. I completely agree, we don't need to get distracted with words, when those words were picked at some point, because they had meaning. Now, that's become a target, and a lot of that's just silly. And I agree with this notion that you have here. I just would like a little more time to sit with the things that were, the intent that went behind those ideas, particularly after 2017.
Right.
And I think that what you've got here.
You want to see what's under each of these, I get it.
Yeah, and it may not be one to one, but I, anyway, I think you know what I'm saying.
Yep, I do. And again, my presentation Monday night is my work plan for 2026. Like, I'm working on this retreat with him, because he gave me the assignment. I'm already working on living this out, because I know you have questions. So, I'm going to show you more of what that was.
Sure.
Cool, awesome, thank you. Now, I'm going to say that.
So, let's work, I tell you, every time you see this workshop, I think I'm going to ask you to work. So, hopefully you've taken some notes, again, I'm just going to kind of reiterate, there will be moments throughout today, and I promised two days' notes, I'm going to ask you to bring them into tomorrow as well. But, do me a favor, in front of you, you have a bit of a note card, you have something like this. Grab one of those, a favorite pen. And what I'd like you to do is, this is basically, it's called the IRV interview, and it's around a self-interview around understand, respect, and value. What I'd like you to do in the middle of that, where you see that box, write strategic refresher. Like, strategic priority refresher, just in the middle of that small little box. Write strategic plan refresher, or strategic priority refresher, I'm sorry. Awesome. Okay, I want to give you a few minutes to look at your notes that you wrote, and reflect on what you just heard, and I want you to ask yourself these three questions. And I want to write one thing, write one thing in each of those, like, what do I understand about what I just heard? Overall, high level, what do I respect about what I just heard? And what do I value about what I just heard? I'm going to ask you this, like, where it is, you just kind of heard high level strategic priority refresher. Look back at your notes, and write in one of the, just turn them, turn them, beautiful card. But write one thing that I understand about what I just heard. One thing that I respect about what I just heard, and one thing I value. Respect doesn't have to be agree with, it's a level of respect. And value about what I just heard, contribution, impact. Go ahead and write that, look at your notes and write one thing in each section. Give you about three more minutes. All right, about a minute and a half. Do I understand about what I just heard, respect, value regarding the strategic priority refresher? Okay. All right, I want to, let's talk about it, I want to ask. Regarding understand, I'm kind of working way around the room, Juan, will you start us off? What is something about, that you understand about what you just heard?
So, something that I under, that's really clear in those comments that we gave Sam and we've said, is that the history of this community plays a lot on what we do and where we spend our money. The history, not just from 2017 and 2020, but particularly, you know, with Vinegar Hill, it plays a big role in everything that we do, in decisions that we make here. That's what something to me did.
That I understand, yeah. Okay, something you understand?
Oh, I guess my thing that came to mind was that we do have a good plan, it was a good plan two years ago. It's time for it to be updated, which is what we're here, but I just wanted to emphasize that it has been a good plan, it is a good plan. And also, understanding that we made a lot of progress along it.
Yeah.
I had some conversations with people last spring, and it was like, what are y'all doing? And what we've done a lot.
Yeah, so to have those conversations and see this up here, you've been able to connect some of the.
Correct.
Yeah, I love that. Lloyd, something you understand about what you just heard?
I really found all of our problems involve money, which means trade-offs, and that we have to take time to get that right.
Yeah, okay, that's a deep understanding, that is, yeah, absolutely. Something you understand about what you just heard?
One of the messages that I received from the presentation is, nine or 10 things is too many things, but there is a lot of overlap. So, even though there's nine or 10 things, they're not mutually exclusive, and therefore can be consolidated.
Sure, yeah, that's great, yeah, great. Something you understand about what you just heard?
Well, what I wrote down was just very high level, just clearly understanding the intent of the past, strategic plan and kind of purpose of it. What Juan said made me think something else, that these priorities look different to different people in the community, especially depending on how much money you have. I think that's like a big point.
That's great, yeah. What about respect, something that you respect about what you just heard? And it's different understanding, understanding is like information and knowledge, and respect may not have to be agreement, but you pay homage to that thing, because you understand it's important. Juan, something that you respect about what you just heard?
So, what I heard is that, you know, from those comments, is that council, we value everyone. You know, we talked about this is a place where everyone thrives, but what I heard from our comments is, we particularly want to value those who are most vulnerable in our community.
Yeah, you saw that, and respect that we, that as a council, we want to do, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah, I love it, something you respect about what you just heard?
It's gone into executing against that over the course of the last couple of years, and also the fact that we've been given updates every quarter by the city manager, tracking that respect.
I love that respect to work, Lloyd, what's something you respect?
The interconnectedness of what we're trying to do in our big problem areas.
So, it's a little similar to what you were saying, that so many things are actually like connected, which is great, they're not isolated in there as well, yeah, absolutely.
The hearts and minds are in the right place, people generally want others to have what they need, which covers a lot of different levels, and like as Michael was saying about the spectrum of what those needs look like are different for different people with different backgrounds or amounts of resources. And so, we all generally are looking out for others, what you can't necessarily be said for other, you know, political parties.
What I also hear in that is that the characters.
Communities.
Right, like, I hear you pointing out, like, the character and the desire for people to have what they want lives like amongst everyone.
And that, what that looks like is still different for all of us, but we're all generally going to some.
Something you respect about what you just heard?
Both from the plan and its implementation, you know, since it was developed a few years ago, it's just very clear that for the staff and in the document, that there's like a clear level of like care for the community and care about trying to positively impact people's lives. That's one of the things I took away, is just the intent is clear, that, you know, there's not indifference to the.
Respect and why we want to do this, yeah, I'm with you. All right, last one, what is something, the strategic priority refresher, what is something you value? Something after hearing it and reflecting on it, what's something that you value about what you just heard from Sam?
So, what I got is that we as a council and as a community really value people and their environment. And the second part is something that I really had to come positive when I ran for council, that for some people in the community, the environment is not as strong, is not as a high priority, but others is really strong, the climate and environment. But anyway, I saw people and their environment.
Yeah, got it, something we value is people and the environment, I love it.
I just had people.
People, yeah. You saw that through, and saw it in the quotes, and in the refresher, then you saw people all the way through, yeah? Lloyd?
Oh, what I wrote down has, actually has nothing to do with what Sam said when he was speaking.
But it was insight that jumped out, yeah.
That what I value about this particular group, I mean, the counselors and city central staff, and for that matter, basically everybody that I have met and have some sense of, is that I think we all have trust in each other's good faith.
That's good.
Which makes it so much easier to get to decisions.
Yeah.
That has not always been the case on council.
You hear that, I've been around for more than 11 years, I would agree to all of that, absolutely, you've seen some things.
So, two of my biggest issues are transportation and housing, and those are crucial drivers of this conversation, and so I'm happy. And so I'm happy to see that they are of value to the conversation and the list and everybody else. Because that is kind of, I would argue that that, those two are at the basis of kind of everything else. So having them be prioritized in our conversation is, um, I think I value that.
We're going to have some hard conversation by the way. If we're to dive in together, we're going to roller sleeves up and live in that value with them. Because they, the thing why some of these valuable, because it's important, it's important because it's got a lot of potential and impact and things like that in as well, so we're, I love that.
They're the, they're the low bearing features of the community.
Something you value after hearing Sam's presentation?
Um, I would say that all this, you know, can lead to, you know, actual policy changes that positively impact people's lives. It's not just, you know, words on paper, um, it's like driving change. And then also being able to like, measure the impact on people's lives because intent isn't enough.
Right.
Um, just because the city thinks it's doing the right thing doesn't mean that it turns out it actually harmed people.
Yeah.
So how do we measure that impact? And I think there's a reflection and organizational excellence and other things as well in the implementation of trying to actually measure and not just accept that our intent is good enough.
I often say intention and execution are two different things, so I would agree with you, absolutely. Uh, awesome, look, thank you all for reflecting and sharing on that. Uh, I want you to take a break, okay? So remember, honor your break. Um, and then when we get into what is, we're going to talk about the community survey next. Um, so please go ahead and take a break, we're going to finally land on about 10 minutes. Take a 10 minute break and I'll, I'll see you back in 10 minutes.
Hello, everyone. Thank you all for coming back and joining your break, taking a break. I was very excited to see people talking and not scrolling, so good job. Um, I am very pleased to be able to present to you all as additional information during this time of your reflection and thought process, the latest administration of the National Community Survey. We have with us Grace Arneston from Polco, who is the organization that administers the survey. The city has done this survey for several years, so I'm also very excited. She's going to show you data that builds upon itself. So we've got some really good longitudinal data. Um, I want to encourage you all to please take notes. You will be able to also ask questions as well. Everyone should have a copy in front of them, maybe to mark up, scribble, dog ear as we go through. Um, and there also is a larger, um, document as well that we will be making available, not only to the public, but to you all as well. Uh, but Grace, if we can just test you coming off mute to make sure that everyone can hear you?
Yes, test, how's the volume?
That works wonderfully. So Grace, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much, Ashley. Hi, everyone, my name is Grace. I've been a project manager here at Polco for about four years now and I've worked with hundreds of jurisdictions across the US. So I'm happy to be here to present the findings of the Charlottesville National Community Survey. And before I want to begin, I do want to thank Ashley Marshall. She was our primary contact throughout the survey process and she provided really thoughtful feedback every step of the way and helped to organize this presentation. So thank you so much, Ashley. As she mentioned, this presentation will be about 25 minutes long with 15 minutes at the end for questions. All right, so before we dive into your results, I'd like to share a little bit about Polco. Polco is an online community engagement platform providing local governments with resident and employee feedback. The acquired data can be used for budgeting, strategic planning, and empowering resident voices. So you may have heard of NRC or National Research Center. Polco merged with them back in 2019 and NRC has been around since 1994. They're best known for developing the NCS survey along with the National Employee Survey, the Community Assessment for Older Aduls, among others. Um, we also partner closely with ICMA and NLC along with many other local government academic leaders. So before we dive into results, I want to emphasize that there are a variety of ways that these can be used. So most commonly, the folks we work with use their survey data to monitor trends, which Ashley mentioned, you have amazing trend data to look at here. Um, this monitors trends in resident opinion and informs budgeting and strategic plans. Our results also allow you to benchmark your community's specific characteristics against all of the communities in our benchmark database, which I'll cover in just a few slides here. So we hope that these findings will spark ideas of where you may want to explore further. So a little bit about the NCS instrument. It is a standardized five-page survey that measures resident opinion about community and local government. It focuses on these 10 facets of livability shown here. And these are all related to overall quality of life and they often align with municipal departments as well so that it's easier for staff to find, um, results most relevant to their work. So, um, you'll see these here, we have a few additional questions in addition to these 10 facets, including demographic questions and a couple of participation questions like, um, have you voted? Have you campaigned? Have you carpooled? So the survey primarily focuses on these 10 facets here. And with that, we'll dive into Charlottesville's specific results. This is where I really want to spend a lot of time. Um, so we're covering the methodology here. And this was Charlottesville's sixth time conducting the NCS with the previous survey iteration in 2022. So you'll see throughout the report some trend data. That trend data is all referencing between 2022 and 2025. Um, you can look back in the full report at those old trends, but today we'll primarily be focusing on the most recent trend. So two sample, um, we purchased a household list based on updated USPS listings from Charlottesville zip codes. And from that list, we used city provided GIS files to remove any addresses that were not within Charlottesville. And then from the remaining list, 3,000 addresses were selected to receive survey invites. So during the survey administration, mailings began about April 15th and the survey remained open for six weeks. So that first mailing was a postcard. This included instructions to take the survey, a QR code and a link to the survey. And it also let folks know that a paper survey was on the way. So the second mailing was a survey packet. This contained a cover letter, postage paper turned envelope, and paper survey so that everyone had the chance to apply via paper. Both mailings did include a web link for completing the survey online, so that was an option as well. And the survey was available in English and Spanish and all of those letters and postcards had highlighted full instructions. So from our process, we received 386 completed surveys for a 14% response rate and margin of error of plus or minus 5%. Uh, responses were also weighted to match Charlottesville demographic makeup and that was based on data from the census and ACX data. We also, during our data collection period, conducted an open participation survey. So this was a link that Charlottesville shared. It was open from May 13th to 17th. Um, and this was an opportunity for all community members to participate, even those who hadn't received an invite. So 664 responses were received there. However, this presentation and the report are based on the 386 random sample responses since those were gathered using scientific methods. So open participation results are provided to you in the full report if that interests you, but we'll be focusing on the random samples today. So I mentioned our benchmark database earlier and one of the big advantages of participating in our community surveys is the opportunity to compare ratings given by your residents to those from communities across the nation. So our benchmark database is the largest of its kind. It currently has over 500 communities and that represents over 15 million voices. So, um, we were one of the first to develop this benchmark database and we're very proud of it. And you'll see these benchmark ratings throughout your report and this presentation. So overview of survey results, we will dive into some general results and then go into a little sub areas where we might dig a little bit deeper. So to start off here, in the survey, we have two questions that are asked directly about those 10 facets of community, community livability that I mentioned earlier. So the first, as residents to rate their quality of life. And you can see the resulting comparison to the national benchmark in the shading on this chart. Um, so you'll notice here, education, arts, and culture is highest in quality and higher than the national benchmark, followed closely by natural environment, parks and recreation, and health and wellness. Um, some notable lower scores, safety and community design did fall below that national benchmark. And mobility was the lowest in quality. We also asked about those same facets of livability, but we asked a question centered on how important residents think it is for the community to focus on these 10 facets over the coming two years. So as you can tell, um, importance is, you know, important to residents. So we have higher ratings here. Everything for the most part was similar to the benchmark with the exception of utilities. Um, economy being the most important topic for residents, followed closely by mobility, natural environment, safety, and, uh, community design. The lower score was health and wellness here. This data is very helpful, but it's even more helpful when you put it together with those quality assessments, which is this gap chart, and this is included in your report. So this is comparing the quality and importance of those whole novel facets of livability. So this chart is one of many ways to interpret your data and can be used to help you determine focus areas or areas where you might allocate some additional resources. And the largest gaps here were mobility with that 39% quality and 82% importance, followed by community design, economy, and lastly, safety.
Could you just provide maybe examples of what community design means?
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. So community design is the overall design of the community. So, um, looking at new development, growth, um, residential areas. This was, I don't believe it's in the presentation, but it is in the report. And I can dive into that a bit deeper towards the end. I can pull up that report and show you what the community design section looks like. Um, but mainly, yes, just development, um, overall design of the neighborhoods, of the commercial areas, and also preservation of the historical, um, elements of the community as well, with a few others in there. So, um, compared to the national benchmarks of the 123 survey items for which residents provided ratings, four received ratings that were higher than the national benchmark. 97 were similar to the benchmark and 22 received lower ratings. So these ratings are considered similar if they're within 10 points of the national average and higher or lower if they are more than 10 points different from the average. Oops, sorry, not on that. However, trend data adds some additional context here. So when comparing Charlottesville's NCS results in 2022 to the 2025 results, 23 received ratings that were higher than the 2022 results. 86 were similar to those results and 14 received lower ratings. Moving now into the highlights of our findings, I just want to point out here that these are things that we as survey researchers found interesting, but there is a lot of additional data in the full report that we won't cover today. Um, so we'll focus on a few key areas we found to be most noteworthy, but please do, if you have a chance, read through that full report because there is much more robust data in there. So our first key finding here, most residents experience a high quality of life in Charlottesville. So about seven in 10 residents gave excellent or good ratings to Charlottesville as a place to live, the overall image or reputation of the city, and the overall quality of life in the city. In addition, seven in 10 residents indicated that they plan to remain in Charlottesville for the next five years and would recommend living in Charlottesville to someone who asked. All right. Ratings for Charlottesville local government also increased since 2022. So we asked residents about the local government performance in Charlottesville and results across all ratings were similar to the national benchmark. But as you see here, we had many notable improvements since 2022. Actually, all of the ratings on this slide were statistically significant increases from 2022 results. So in looking here, about 56% of residents rated the city treating residents with respect as excellent or good, followed by 51% for the city's efforts to, well, for the city's efforts to welcome residents and 49% for being honest. Just under half positively rated the general performance in the best interest of the community at about 48%. Communication about issues, transparency, and overall confidence in local government. The lowest rating was for treating all residents fairly, yet this too has increased since 2022. Safety also continues to be rated positively, maintaining strong levels of satisfaction. So in terms of community safety, about 88% of residents indicated that they feel safe in their neighborhood during the day and 86% feel safe from flood, fire, or other natural disaster. Just over eight in 10, about 82%, report feeling safe in the downtown or commercial area during the day. And perceptions of safety dropped a little bit when it comes to crime. So about 64% feel safe from property crime and 63% feel safe from violent crime. Safety from violent crime was rated lower than the national benchmark here. So scores for safety services tended to be a bit more positive and a few items did increase since 2022. So fire services received the highest rating with almost all residents, 95% rating them as excellent or good, followed closely by ambulance and emergency medical services at 90%. Fire prevention and education also scored well with 82% satisfaction. And although a little bit lower than other safety services, police services and crime prevention both saw an increase since 2022 results. Police services experienced a nine-point increase and crime prevention experienced an eight-point increase here. Affordability remains a concern to many residents in the city. So the economy has a lot to cover, so hang in there with me. But when we asked about the local economy, about 84% of respondents rated the city positively as a place to visit and 72% were satisfied with the overall quality of businesses and service establishments. Um, it's worth noting here that the overall quality of business and service establishments did decrease slightly since 2022 results. Um, ratings for Charlottesville as a place to work, the variety of this, of service and business establishments and the vibrancy of the downtown and commercial areas are also in line with the national averages here. And we had a few items fall below the national average, including the availability of affordable quality childcare, preschool, the availability of affordable quality housing, cost of living. And we also asked a question on the survey, what impact do you think the economy will have on your family over the next six months? Only 8% felt that that would be, um, very or somewhat positive. However, these downward trends are certainly not unique to Charlottesville. We've been seeing this across many, many reports. So we wanted to include this national data here for context. And the data used to create this chart comes from our national benchmark database. As you can see here, some items like the availability of affordable quality housing, which is our pink line here, that has been declining for some time. But others like the cost of living, the availability of affordable quality food and childcare, those have shown large declines in the post-pandemic economy, especially as we've been navigating very high inflationary times, combined with increasing interest rates, and relatively lower consumer sentiment about the overall health of the economy. So although we do see declines in some of these ratings related to the past survey effort of 2022, many of them relate to these broader national trends. And this isn't to say that the city should or shouldn't do something to address these issues, but hopefully this helps to place them in a broader context by taking into account the other jurisdictions we've worked with over the past decade. Our fifth key finding here, residents identify mobility as an important area of focus. So mobility was rated the second most important facet by residents. If you remember one of the first slides, we asked residents, how important is it for the city to focus on these over the next two years? And mobility was the second most important there. So that was the, I believe, biggest or second biggest gap as well in our quality and importance chart. But looking here at the results, the highest rated aspect related to mobility was ease of walking at fifty-five percent excellent or good, followed by ease of travel by car. So ease of travel by car, ease of public parking, and ease of travel by bicycle were falling below the national benchmark this year. And ease of travel by car experienced a statistically significant decline since 2022. The ease of travel by public transportation was also a little bit lower here. So we had twenty-seven percent rate that as excellent or good, and that was on par with 2022 results. Traffic flow on major streets was similar to the benchmark at thirty-one percent, which doesn't surprise me too much. As you can imagine, we have a lot of strong feelings about traffic. So not too surprised to see that that is a relatively lower rating, but yet still on par with that national benchmark.
So I'd say clarification for the previous slide. The second ease of travel by car, I just want to make sure I understand, fifty-one percent. What does that mean again?
Yes, so fifty-one percent of residents rated the ease of travel by car as excellent or good.
And the fact that it's a decline shows that it used to be more people thought it was excellent or good. Also, the fact that it's a decline is a good thing.
Okay.
All right. In terms of mobility services, some did see improvement since the last survey iteration in 2022. So again, this is percent excellent or good here. You'll see that sixty-one percent rated street cleaning as excellent or good, followed closely by street lighting at fifty-nine percent, snow removal at fifty-six percent. And both of those experienced statistically significant increases since 2022. Traffic enforcement falling closely at forty-eight percent positive, and about forty-one percent appreciating use of bus or transit services. This was also increasing significantly since 2022. So all categories here did perform on par with the national benchmark. And we had quite a few improvements, which is a contrast against the overall mobility. It's obvious that the mobility services are doing their best to correct some of these potential focus areas. So last and not least, educational and cultural opportunities remain highly valued in Charlottesville. So in terms of education, arts, and culture, we asked residents to rate each of these items on a scale of excellent, good, fair, poor. And we have eighty-eight percent appreciating the public library services. This was the highest rated item in this facet, and that's on par with the national benchmark. Community support for the arts falls closely at eighty percent, along with opportunities to attend cultural arts and music festivals. Both of those items scored higher than the national benchmark here. Opportunities to attend special events and festivals and adult educational opportunities along with K through twelve education were a little bit lower, but still relatively high comparison to all of the ratings throughout the report. And all of these were on par with the national benchmark as well. We didn't have any trends to note here, so these were also stable with 2022 results and the consistent satisfaction. So additional special topics. In addition to these data values by the page survey instrument, we had a little bit of space left to include some custom questions that were unique to Charlottesville. So this is our question here. I know it might be a little bit hard to read, we'll have it more clearly on the next slide. So for this custom question, we asked residents whether the city's current service level should be increased, kept the same, or decreased for various services. And looking at this chart here, it has a ton of data for your review, but about sixty percent would like to see increased efforts in both bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure and traffic system improvements. Well, about thirty-four and thirty-seven percent respectively support maintaining current service levels in those areas. So just looking at those first two items there, you'll see traffic system improvements. About sixty percent wanted to increase, while about thirty-seven percent said that we could keep the current service, and only three percent there said that they would decrease service. So looking forward here to street and sidewalk repair. Just over half of residents support increasing levels of street and sidewalk maintenance and repairs, about fifty-one percent. And a nearly equal share would like to maintain the current levels. So about forty-eight percent were happy with the current level. Communication about city programs, services, and activities also received calls for more investment with about fifty percent figuring an increase, and forty-five percent agreeing to keep service levels the same. So each of the remaining items here, once we move past the communication about city programs, services, and activities, had fewer than fifty percent of respondents saying that services should be increased. However, for a vast majority of these, over fifty percent did want to maintain the current service level, with only downtown parking management, police patrol, and investigative services, and support for nonprofits seeing double-digit totals for those hoping to decrease the service levels. Of the items here which could be compared to the 2022 survey, three saw statistically significant increases, with more residents saying that the service should remain the same or be increased in 2025. And those were communicating with residents about city programs, services, and activities. That saw a seven-point increase in terms of either increasing the service or keeping the same service. Providing competitive grant funding to local nonprofits saw a whopping seventeen percent increase in terms of increasing or keeping that service the same. And police patrol and investigative services saw a ten-point increase there. So a quick summary of conclusions here. Most residents experience a high quality of life. The local government ratings increased since 2022. Safety continues to be rated positively, maintaining strong levels of satisfaction. Affordability remains a concern for many residents in the city. Residents identify mobility as an important area of focus, and educational and cultural opportunities remain highly valued in Charlottesville. With that, I know that was a lot of information at once, so I'd like to thank you all for your time and open up the room for questions. I will just move back to the summary of conclusions so we can have a quick view here, but happy to hop around to any other slides if there are relevant questions.
Grace, I have one question I had about your methodology. You had said on the page, talking about the three hundred eighty-six total responses received, six hundred and sixty-four responses to the open participation survey, which you said, if I interpreted you correctly, that you did not factor in those responses into the data we saw right at the end there. What was either the purpose or the value of that open participation survey if you weren't going to use it?
Yeah, great question. Well, it does provide some interesting context. So a lot of jurisdictions will look at their open participation and random sample results side by side. And they'll see, okay, so we have six hundred and sixty-four residents respond to the open participation survey. Those are likely very engaged and vocal residents. And you're able to see, are they feeling more confident in the city or less confident? Are there any big disparities between our random sample and open participation survey? So that is one way. Another benefit of this is we have the opportunity to reach out to people who have signed up on Polco to conduct additional outreach. So during future open participation surveys, we can invite those who have participated in the past and provided their email address to participate in those, grow in your online panel for future surveys. So there are a couple benefits. And the third, I think I left the best for last. It's just giving the opportunity to everyone in the community to participate. So we've had feedback that, you know, I get a mail invite, but I'd still like to give my feedback. Gives them the opportunity to provide that and communicate with the city.
Are there any different lessons that one might glean from those six hundred and some responses different from the statistics generated by the three hundred eighty-six responses?
Sorry, couldn't quite hear you there.
Okay, I'm just wondering, is there anything that, any conclusions that you gleaned or any trends that you gleaned from the six hundred and sixty-four open participation responses that either couldn't be discerned from the three hundred eighty-six or might have been different from the three hundred eighty-six?
You know, I haven't looked into that personally, but we certainly could. Let me follow up on that and compare those open participation and random sample results. And we'll follow up with Ashley to circle back and answer that question.
Well, again, I'm not asking you to try to pull out something that isn't a valid conclusion. But I'm, you know, for example, if it turns out that the six hundred and sixty-four responses are largely the same as the three eighty-six, okay, that's fine. If we know that we have very different results out of the six sixty-four than we had out of the three eighty-six, there might be something worthwhile noting there.
Yeah, absolutely.
Any other comments? Natalie?
Thank you for asking that. That was one of my questions as well. You mentioned having the surveys sent out.
I'm so sorry, I can't quite hear you. Could you speak up a little bit?
Yeah, no, I just said that Lloyd's question was one of my questions as well. But also, you mentioned having the surveys sent out in English and Spanish. Charlottesville is known for having a very diverse language population. And I'm wondering if, is there a way to get more languages out there? Or is that nationwide, the only two languages that you have available?
No, our list of languages is ever-growing. So I think last time we checked, we were at either fifteen or twenty languages. So those are programmed on Polco, so we can do the online survey in many languages. We could also provide a paper survey in a different language as well. That gets pretty expensive because the printing costs are high. So I would recommend doing those online translations. One thing that's worth mentioning too is a lot of folks who don't speak English primarily at home, they use like an extension on their browser to translate that. And Polco is compatible with that Google Chrome extension. We're not able to track that on our site, but we have a really strong suspicion that a lot of folks are using that to translate the survey and respond in their own language.
Yeah, I'm more concerned about them knowing, if, you know, you get a postcard in the mail, that doesn't have that automatic translate feature, to know that that's what the postcard is asking them to do.
Absolutely.
So I don't know what the problem solve for that is, but it's something to keep in mind, especially for Charlottesville, is we might be missing some data there.
Absolutely, yes. And there are some options too, outside of translating the survey online. We could even just include a note in different languages that the survey is compatible with that translation feature on Chrome as well. So I've seen that done in the past, but I think we can definitely include additional languages in the future.
And Grace, I was going to share, part of the reason why we've selected for the second year in a row to make sure it was available in Spanish is previously it was not presented even as bilingual. And so this helped me to get trends, and all of my data shows that while we do have a large variety of languages, if I am looking at the prevalence of a foreign language, at this point, it still was Spanish. I think that that is a wonderful opportunity for us to expand into that. But I also wanted the city manager to be able to have two years of us even introducing it in Spanish to see if that made a difference at all. Because again, previously, we did not introduce this as being compatible or having any other language in the statistically significant survey. In the open survey, we did know that people can use that Google Translate button if they so desire to be able to engage, but that's some reflection and recommendations we can make for the next administration. But it was honestly a bit of a test to see where we are. And then thinking of that expense for the printed copy, looking at our most prevalent language, which still is Spanish.
Yeah, okay, thanks. And then my last note is, on this page here, the number one point, most residents experience a high quality of life in Charlottesville, was the question about the respondents? Or was it about how you perceive people in the community? Like, are they answering on behalf of themselves?
Mm-hmm, yes. So it's about their own experience in the community.
Okay.
I can scroll back to that slide here. I believe the question is included. Okay, it's not, but I can also, we stop by share here and read the exact wording of that question. So in the report of results here, it would, share again.
So Michael, did you have any questions or comments? Because I know we've got some time.
Well, the reason why, if I could, the reason why I asked that is because I would rephrase that to say most respondents experience a high quality of life in Charlottesville. And that's something that changes the kind of value of that bullet point. I think it becomes a little more accurate because we know there are people who have challenges, and those are probably going to be the hardest people to get to respond. And so residence feels like it encompasses more than might actually be represented, even if it is statistically significant. And then in line with that, the seven out of ten respondents who said they would remain for the next five years and recommend it. One of the follow-ups, I don't know if this is captured in the study, but I would, one of my questions was, how long have they lived here already? And does it capture long-term residents or short-term residents? And how does that change, did that change their responses?
Yeah, so can we actually dig into that in the report too? Yeah, so can we actually dig into that in the report too? Ashley, do I have time for a two-minute demo here?
I don't think. How much time do we have?
Yeah.
Yeah, I want to get everyone's questions because we have to move on, so I don't think we have-
But if we get follow-up on that, we'd be-
Yeah, I will follow up on that with you. There is a way to compare length of residency against the answers supplied. So basically, all of the demographic questions we asked, we're able to break down the questions by those categories. So-
Okay, that'd be interesting.
Any other questions, Natalie?
Not right now, thanks.
Try to be, I'll try to be quick. Similar to other questions, I'm sure the people who actually respond to the survey are very different from, they self-selected, either they're more engaged with local government already, maybe they're just psychologically even different. Does your weighting address that bias of like, who is more likely to even respond to a survey they get in the mail?
Yes, so are we, we actually wait both surveys. So we wait both the random sample and the open participation survey to make sure that that is still representative of the population. And we do see, we tend to see older women respond at a higher rate and younger men at a much lower rate. So we tend to give those, those younger men a higher weight so that it matches the community makeup. And we, as long as we receive at least 100 responses to that open participation survey, we do wait that as well.
But I guess you just can't wait, if even, across all demographics, people are self-selecting. There's a correlation between self-selecting and responding.
If I can help, they wait all of it, looking at multiple demographics, from age, Hispanic origin, housing tenure, housing type, race and Hispanic origin, sex and age, and various groups. And so I have that larger data for you, but remember, this was, this is more of a snapshot, but I love that you all want to be walking. Let's do it, I love it.
Sure. No, I mean, it's definitely, it's useful, useful data for sure still. And then just quick thoughts, one, it jumps out to me that our parks are maybe the only area of government that it seems like people like to praise rather than just criticize, and that kind of jumped out in the responses. Not shocking, but that we're 20 points lower than national average for availability of affordable housing, cost of living, affordable childcare, jumped out, we're substantially lower than national average. And then the lack of access to affordable childcare jumped out at me because so much of our population growth has been driven by older residents. Our school population over the past 20 years only increased by 17 students. So what can we do to make it more feasible for people to actually start families in Charlottesville was something that jumped out as well.
Brian?
No, I, yeah, I just had a couple of comments. Is the 14% is that within, is that okay that responded? Is that like, you know, about what we expect?
Yeah, that is a great response. We actually just ran the 2025 average response rate yesterday, and it's landing at 11% on average. So you are certainly above average there.
Okay. And do we know, and I assume that when you mailed the paper survey that it included a self, a snail envelope to send it back?
Yes, sir.
And my last question, my last question is, do we know like of the people that responded, the demographic breakdown of them?
Yes, sir.
Like, how many, roughly how many African-Americans responded? How many of our new Afghanistan community, do we know, just generally speaking, what that is?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
We do have that information.
Okay.
Go ahead, Ashley.
Oh, if you have it at your fingertips, I'm trying to find it, but I also will share that in, part of the reason why we look at the statistically significant survey is we are also able to weigh how they deploy those 3,000 original invitations. So we look at communities that maybe have lower responses, maybe it's socioeconomic or various other options, if we can find that in census data, and they can push a few more surveys to that group to give more people an opportunity to answer than in a section of a community where they are very apt to answer questions and like love filling out the Nielsen survey, right? So that's another way that they can weigh to try and get the best responses from our totality of community than just people who like to fill in boxes.
Got it, I got it. So it was factored in?
Yes, sir.
Good.
We're going to get a second to reflect together, but is there any more questions, actual questions? Cool, thank you. Can we celebrate, Grace? Just thank you for the time.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you all for your time, and my email is on the last one there. If you have any questions, please send it my way. But I look forward to hearing how you all utilize these results, and thank you so much for your time today.
All right, hang tight with me for-
We actually have Jason's email.
Oh, my email is on the new version, so-
I can read it to you.
It's grace@polco.us. So just replace Jason Newmeyer with Grace.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you so much for inviting me, I appreciate it. Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right, hang tight with me for two seconds.
You got it.
The group. All right. All right, do me a favor, grab your other, grab your other herb, if you could. I'd like you to grab a blank one inside the middle of that, if you can write community survey, that would be great. And then take five minutes, from everything you just heard, what do you understand, what do you respect, and what do you value? Right, community survey in the middle of that, what do you understand, what do you respect, in which you value it? Confidence. High level, what do you understand, what do you respect, what is they value? All right, just about another minute. All right, well, we start us off, this time, what we do is go through it all, tell us like, you know, after hearing what I just heard, here's what I understand, here's what I respect, and here's what I value.
Yeah, so what I understand is that I believe that we're headed in the right direction as a council, as a city, but we still have a lot of work to do. What I respect is, I respect council and staff for their service because what we saw was a lot of that was, whether it was the police, the library, whatever, was the efforts of staff working. And what, what I value is that, you know, that our efforts to, for increasing mobility, that is having an impact on residents, and our, you know, you know, our commitment and our love of library and books in this community is phenomenal, there's a lot of bookstores and libraries here in this community, so that's, that's massive.
Appreciate that. All right, what do you understand, respect, and value?
I don't mean this in any way to be discouraging or anything like that, but just generally reaffirms my skepticism of surveys.
Okay.
Not that I don't-
Disagree.
Skepticism is too strong a word.
Sure.
I just know enough math and have seen enough people at their front door, but I feel like surveys, particularly when she was going through all the various numbers, it gives you a sense of precision, that's just not, doesn't reflect reality. And even if 400 people in the city somehow turns out to be statistically representative of the whole city, I mean, I just find that hard to believe. Not that, on the other hand, I think the trend data though is valuable.
And surveys is a tool, right? The idea is how we design and create that tool to better try and do-
Yeah, I know there's a whole theory, I mean, I get it, I took statistics in college a long, long time ago, but the thing that I respect, which is the flip side, I guess, is the time and attention to detail that went into it, and I respected it from a professional perspective. There's a world of surveys, and I'm sure they know, even though they've struggled with political investigations lately. The thing that I value frankly is what we actually hear from our residents. Again, I wonder, I've always wondered, when I've knocked on doors versus what people fuss at us with over email or whatever, you, Heather Hill always talked about the difference between the signal and the noise, what are we hearing about that's actually representing something real in the community versus people who are just annoyed? And so-
Okay. Lloyd, understand, respect, and value about the community survey?
For the first thing, I took away from the various poll results, even recognizing the difficulties with trying to draw too many broad conclusions out of what is still essentially meager data, that I was glad to see that the respondents and city government are largely aligned in our perceptions of what the problem areas are. I note that some of the work that we have been doing seems to have been working and appreciated by the respondents. And finally, I was gratified to see that respondents think that government is doing better than it had been.
I love it. What do you understand, respect, and value?
I understand that a lot of weight is being put on 386 people.
True.
I respect that the survey tries to get at important questions, you know, it's a tall order to try and assess the community. But yeah, given the context of designing surveys, this seems like it was covering the bases as intended and well. And then even though it's a small sample and I can't pick and choose the responses I like and give them more weight, I acknowledge that. I still am gratified to see that the bug pad infrastructure demands are going up and the ease of travel is going down, both of those are good signs, ease of car travel is going down, both of those are good signs.
Well, I would agree with others' broader point, like I feel like community engagement is really hard for the city. It reminds me of like the Cherry Avenue Small Area Plan, where when it started, the city expected people to come to us, and it didn't work at all, and we had to go to people, knock on their door, meet them where they're at, so it just made me think of that. But from the responses, I understand it was not surprising that Charlottesville is very hard to afford, and particularly hard for people to afford to start a family in. What do I respect? That trust in local government and the functioning of local government reached a very, very low point, you know, sometime after 2017, and I think a lot of rebuilding is happening, and there's an increase in trust, but that takes a lot of time. It takes time for the narrative to change and to rebuild. What do I value? That what was in the survey that people cared most about, the city is taking very substantial action on. Some of that will take a while to materialize, or maybe people don't know everything that's happening, but all of it is met with very significant investments and staff changes to like try to implement these things.
Yeah, I agree. No, thank you for that, I appreciate you all sharing. What I'm attempting to do is build you a toolbox of understanding as well as we go through this information, because again, I'm sure you'll hear me say it and probably get tired by saying it, I'm going to ask you to reflect on your notes for tomorrow. So please continue to take your thoughts, your beautiful insights, and the things you write down, and just kind of hold it. I'm going to ask you to leave it here as well, because we are, tomorrow, I'm going to actually dip into that toolbox you built today. So thank you, do me a favor, if you don't want to take a break, take a five-minute break, I want to kind of get a little bit of us some time back, but do me a favor, take a five-minute break, try to take a real break, grab something to drink, go outside, it's not too hot, breathe for a second, we'll see you back in five minutes, and we're going to talk about the financial conditions, you'll understand, again, where it is. So, so far, where it is regarding strategic priorities, where it is regarding community, and then we will look at where it is regarding the financial condition and economic context. Cool? All right, take five minutes, yep.
All right, so we are back, and Josh focused on the idea that we were talking about where it is, so we started with your priority areas, why you selected the priority areas, I went through what you have said about them, why you picked them, now you've heard a little bit about how some members of the community is actually reflecting on them, hopefully helping you see that you're on the right targets, might not be hitting all the targets, might be missing some of the targets, that's kind of the point of what the survey is supposed to do, you let it inform, and then you move on from it, you get back to work. So in order for us to do that, we ought to always check in on the money side, and if my friend Chrissy Hammond was here, who is on the beach right now, and Julie Purcell was stressed out that we're having a conversation about money without her, if Chrissy were here, she would be sitting up in her chair now and watching all of you as you start to talk about spending money. So what we decided we would do was make sure that we gave you a financial checkup, and Vienn Leon is with PFM, they're our financial advisor. Vienn has been instrumental in helping us get through collective bargaining, y'all don't always get to see the sausage making and the behind-the-scenes stuff, but there was a moment when I was on a cliff, ready to jump, and it was Vienn who said, I got you, we'll figure this out, we've done it before, and Chrissy and I both took a sigh of relief and said, okay, Vienn, let's go. So we were able to get through that process, and we're going to appreciate how she has done analysis work. She pitched this to us, and after seeing the proposal, we absolutely wanted to make sure that we provided this kind of context for what does our financial picture look like today, and give her a chance to be able to answer any questions that come up.
Well, good morning, everyone. Thank you for inviting me, and being here is a pleasure. So the same reviews, I am part of PFM, Public Financial Management, it's not clear what we do, that's who we are, and I've been working at PFM for 12 years, and I started my career actually working on the city government side, I was a podium analyst, was my first job, but then came over to the government consulting side. So what I'm going to do today is a three parts presentation. One is step back a little bit and say, okay, where are we economically, in the current economic context? I know that we see the news every day, more data is coming out every day, but step back a little bit and say where we are economically, but then kind of hold it a little bit in terms of like what that step means for Charlottesville on the revenue side and on the expenditure side, and then wrap up with the next step in terms of how do you take that information in and help you with the rest of your decision-making process for the rest of the day and tomorrow. So with this, let me start with the first section, which is the economic context. I know this is a little small, but I'm hanging there. So when we talk about, when we look at the headlines and look at the recession risk, you know, there are a lot of numbers out there, a lot of data that we look at, and one of the figuring that I have always looked at, or at least one of the data points, is the leading economic indicator released by the Congress Board. So when we talk about, you know, the economy, and what does that mean, oftentimes, I have what they call the leading economic indicators, which are kind of all these data points that tell us it's a recession in North Carolina, and there are a bunch of data points, you know, I think nine or 10, and so what the Congress Board does, when they do economic forecasts or reporter, is that they combine all these data points into one single leading economic indicator, and for me, it kind of consolidates a little bit. And so what you see here is the blue lander is like leading- And so what you see here is the blue line there is like leading economic index, essentially telling you what the data points and that includes stuff like, you know, the stock market, interest rates, building permits, new orders, those kind of leading economic indicators. And that is a blue line. The black line up there is a coincident economic indicator and those include things like personal income, employment, right? Those are kind of like the, you know, if a recession happens, that that red line is going to come down. So if you look at kind of the past couple of recessions here, which is a graded area, you see the blue line usually comes before the white line. So what the blue line does is that essentially is the leading economic indicator, right? It should tell you at least when something is coming. And if you look at today here, right here, you can see kind of those divergent point, which is why we have, we're, don't know whether now we're in a recession right now, that is not the end announcement. But you can see these, the blue line, the leading economic indicator coming down. And if you look at this chart, I'm not in the Congress, but like if you look at this chart here, the red line is essentially what they call plays a recession signal. What that tells us is that even though as of today, I think our stock portfolio is still doing okay, there's just that much economic uncertainty today. And what is interesting about this is that you have to remember that, you know, these shaded gray area was decided later on, right? We don't know if we're in a recession as of today, we might be, one, we just don't know it yet. And so that is a tricky thing about kind of the economic situation right now. All that is to say, and I think we all know here that there's a lot of recession risks as of today and more to become. You know, when we talk about recession, you Google that word, you know, the top is usually, you know, if the GDP falls for two successive quarters, although the actual definition of that is a little bit more nuanced than that, if you remember COVID, the recession was only two months. So clearly a recession can be, you know, shorter than two successive quarters. But essentially, you know, a recession is a drop in GDP and as of today, we are in a very unusual territory. Why do I say that? I remember giving this presentation back before COVID. If you look at the two thousand eight recession, right, that was the longest, deepest recession that we have ever had. And then the next recession here is the deepest, the shortest recession we have. So whenever clients ask me, well, if I were to model a recession scenario, what would that look like? Well, it's really hard to model that right now because there's no normal. The last recession was a COVID recession, which is unprecedented. And the one before that was a great recession and really, so the last normal quantitative recession was back in the early two thousands. And that is kind of why it's so hard to predict right now. But you know, if you look at Charlottesville and I look back at the numbers back in the last two recessions, you were actually doing pretty well, we'll talk a little bit about your strengths and your risks, your profile, but you actually did pretty well on both of these recessions in part because you established a downturnary back in two thousand eight. And because you made sort of decisions like halting the capital spending in the COVID era, you did pretty well the last two recessions. But those, you did really well in part because of the planning and the thoughtfulness and the actions that were taken back then. We want to make sure that you are well positioned for the next one. This is a lot of numbers, so let me walk you through this, but remember when I said that we're in an unusual territory? You know, this is the historic recessions showing the expansion duration and the contraction duration. So if you look at this eighteen month on to the way to the right column, that was the longest recession that the US had, that was a great recession. That was the longest recession that the US had ever. And then after that came the longest expansion period of one hundred eighty, twenty-eight months. And again, I said, you know, I remember doing this similar presentation back then, saying like, wow, this is the longest expansion period. While recessions are not driven just by time, just know that you have to be prepared. And of course, the next day COVID hit and that became the shortest contraction ever. So anyway, nerds like me probably like this chart, but this is just again to reiterate the point that we are in a very unusual time right now. You know, there is no roadmap, there is no kind of status quo, there's nothing usual about what we're experiencing right now. I made an earlier point that we don't know if we're in a recession today and I just kind of want to hone in on that point a little bit. Well, this is the next slide, so this is fascinating. This was, this chart is the survey professional forecasters released by the Philadelphia Federal Reserve and they essentially, you know, surveyed from economists and say, well, what do you think GDP will grow next year, how much do you think GDP will grow? And at the time when they surveyed them, you can see this bell curve, but the time when they surveyed them, most of them were thinking between two to three percent in two thousand nine. Now, this survey was released in February of two thousand eight. And guess what, at that time in point, when the economists responded to this survey, we were already in the two thousand eight recession. And at that time when they were saying it will be plus two point eight percent, the actual number was negative two point six percent. And again, I found this fascinating because even the economists didn't know, right, that they were already in a recession. Similar story here, this is the last three recession timeline, if you look at, you know, what I just talked about, right? In December two thousand seven, we entered a recession. February two thousand eight, they were still projecting almost three percent in GDP, but that year we had a negative two point six percent. Now, the period is important to note that like the National Bureau of Economic Research, they announced this late because they want enough data, they say there is a recession. So sometimes a recession could have ended before they announced that there was one, but that was a COVID one. The COVID recession was only two months long and they actually announced it in June, when the recession ended in April. Similar thing happened in the early two thousand recession. The US ended the recession in March two thousand eleven, they actually announced it much later than November. So that's why I said earlier that we could be in one right now, we just don't know about it. And that's highlights the importance of planning and that what you're doing today is that you need to, we all need to anticipate kind of where we are economically before the data is actually coming out. Okay, so what does that mean for Charlottesville, obviously the economic activity, the economic context that we're in have a lot of impact on the revenue side of things. And so I want to step back a little bit and say, okay, you know, just give you an overview of the economic context, what does that mean for Charlottesville on the revenue side of the financial equation? This is a fascinating chart, this is, this is not new, this is in national cities, this is released into twenty twenty-two by the National League of Cities, showing all kind of their survey of national cities. And I wanted to show this slide because we are in, I keep on saying we are in president of times from an economic perspective, but also from a local government financial perspective. The orange line here is expenditures and let's call it blue and those for the heel. The blue line here is the revenue and what you see here is, I haven't seen it before, is this divergent of the line where the expenditure goes up and the revenue goes down. Now, why is that the case? Much of that is in part driven by the ARPA money, the COVID tariffs ad money, all of that, right? That is what is in part driving the orange line up. And what we're seeing is that nationally across cities, the revenues are coming down, yes.
Ask just a picky question, is this the expenditures and revenues of national government, state government, local government, all of them?
It's all cities across the.
All cities?
Yeah, only cities is included.
Okay, thank you.
So this is something I just haven't seen before, I mean, look at the chart before, right? You have seen the line diverging, kind of not lining up, but this is something that to me is unprecedented. I mean, when was the last time, you know, local government's got the kind of money that we got from ARPA and CARES and all that stuff, right? So this is truly unprecedented. And I say when I look at this, you know, if all cities and counties, if you're not paying attention today, you really need to start right now. Right, this is not good with the lines diverging. Okay, that was national cities, like I said, let's look at Virginia. So this is all Virginia counties is blue, city is yellow and all is white. What you're seeing, this is the local revenue average year over year growth from a percentage perspective. What you're seeing is, you know, it was growing wide up and down and down and of course COVID hit. And then look at what happened after COVID. It really shot up from a percentage growth perspective, but then in FY twenty twenty-four, across all local governments, the revenue growth was slowing down. And I want to be clear, this is revenue growth. So revenue was still growing, but it was growing at a lower rate in FY twenty twenty-four across all Virginia counties and cities. And I think you see some of that during the FY twenty twenty-six budget process where you see a lot more jurisdictions, even the northern Virginia jurisdictions, increasing tax rates, making tax rate adjustments in part because the growth is slowing down again across all Virginia cities and counties. Let's talk about Charlottesville now, we've talked about the kind of national landscape, we've talked about Virginia, let's hone in on the city itself. You also experienced some of that, right, the chart previously included Charlottesville. And that what you see here, and this is back, you know, all the way back to twenty sixteen, so this is a decade-long look. And what you see here is, you know, from FY twenty sixteen to kind of COVID, your revenue was growing moderately at about four percent each year. And then opposed to COVID era, like the FY twenty-two and twenty-three, those revenue growth was growing by ten percent. And you see that revenue growth moderated in the last two years to between five or six percent. So that chart that that growth coming down, Charlottesville also experienced that, again, it's not negative growth, it's a positive growth, but the growth has come down since that particular point. You know, this is the typical kind of your general fund high charts. And I want to show it now because, you know, all of you know this, but this to me really highlights Charlottesville's strengths and risks. So if you look at your revenue makeup, right, half of that is your property tax, including a small slice of personal property, but half of that is your property tax, another about twenty percent is a combination of meal sales and other taxes and the rest is what I would call other, which includes the property that I call these chart is. This slice, this fifty percent property tax is your biggest strength, right? Property tax is generally viewed as the most stabilized, non-volatile revenue. And the fact that you have fifty percent of your revenue that comes from this very stable source, even in economic recessions, that is your biggest strength. You also have diversity, right? This whole thing is not all just property because you also have diversity and that's good. Revenue diversity is a good thing and you have some diversity here that represents about twenty percent. But when you think about Charlottesville kind of total revenue, you know, the way I think about it is almost three quarters is from taxes, the rest is from the other. And we'll talk a little bit about how these tax bases are behaving because that at the end of the day drives your ultimate revenue. So I said that the half of your tax base is good, as the real estate tax base is non-volatile, is one of your most stable source of revenue and this shows you the tax loss value. Now, remember the earlier revenue line, you know, slow growth and then high growth and then moderate growth, same same curve here. You know, if you look at the green kind of back in two thousand seven, two thousand seventeen, that was growing about three point four percent and then the growth was a little bit steeper in the back from seven percent and then it's a ten percent revenue. Same coincidentally, almost exactly the same as your revenue growth. And then what we're seeing is that the growth is starting to moderate. The good news here is it didn't drop, right? It never dropped over the last however many years this is showing. What I'm scared of is what if this growth starts coming back down to what you sort of experienced back in the days at a third percent level? If this growth starts slowing down and leveling, that has significant meaning because remember, this is half your total revenue. So that's your strength as your risk is that your strength is that half of this your property tax is by growing very robustly, but what if it comes down in a few years? Let's talk a little bit about your other kind of non-property tax revenue and this is good news and bad news as well. Remember I said that there's, it's a good thing that you have diversified revenue portfolio, but of course, the flip side of the coin, the double-edged sword here is that these revenues are economically vulnerable and they don't grow very much. So these are your meals tax, your sales tax, your lodging tax, these just don't grow very much and you can see it flattening already. The final twenty-five numbers are still not out yet, but you can see that leveling. So that is your risk portfolio right there. I want to step back a little bit and spend a couple of slides just talking about your tax rate and your competitive interest here. So Charlottesville, right, when we look at the city, we have to think about your regional competition from a tax base and tax rate perspective. So this is comparing the city local county in terms of, let's look at this chart particularly first. This is a pre-cabinet as that's valid, in other words, your tax base. And it's a little bit on a pre-cabinet basis, a little bit weaker than the county, but not by much, you can see it's just kind of a hair of the local county. But of course, your tax rate is higher and that is always going to be the case. Any city that we, you know, we look at is always going to be the tax base is the weaker, the tax rate is higher just because of the nature of cities. So you're not out of the norm here, but just know that, right? You're always competing against that kind of surrounding county, you're always competing against that competitiveness nature of the city versus county competition there. Another perspective on tax rate is I compared your tax rates with Northern Virginia. This is the, you know, instead of kind of showing you all the places, different tax rate, this is the weighted average of all of Northern Virginia. What you can see is that your median household income is about half of the Northern Virginia jurisdictions, yes, there's a typo here.
No, I'm assuming that median household income is not taking out the student population?
Correct, yeah, and this is a general, general, I don't even like, I just pulled the numbers from the census bureau. Yes, correct, yeah, and I understand that student population was certainly skewed this number, but this will also like include places like Loudoun County, which has a hundred seventy thousand median household income. So this is, you know, including all of the Northern Virginia counties, which generally has a much higher, wealthier demographic profile. But you can see that, you know, Charlottesville's median household income, let's say is about half of that. But its tax rate is, you know, if you look at the real property tax rate, it's a little, a hair lower. It is lower, but a hair lower at four point one percent. Personal property tax, and this is like the vehicle tax rates, that's a little bit higher, almost one percent. And your meals tax rate is a bit more than double actually than the Northern Virginia. So why do I show this slide? I'm saying, you know, oftentimes if your revenue comes down, you know, you always need to adjust maybe a little bit of the tax rate to bring more revenue and given the expenditure side of the equation here. But there is some room, not to say you don't have any room, but the room is limited. In order to keep your competitiveness, especially in relation to Old North County, even to Northern Virginia jurisdictions, you have limited room to increase your tax rates while remaining competitive. And that's probably where the whole privatization conversation comes in, is that you don't have a lot of room on the rate side in order to increase your revenues. There's another way to look at tax burden, you know, we just talked about tax rates. But the Virginia County Local Government, the CFG, they also release data on revenue effort and it's probably a more precise way to look at kind of burden. Because the revenue effort figure, what that does is it basically shows you how much juice you can squeeze out of the orange. Because what it does is it looks at a little bit at your kind of base as well, your capacity, how much can you get from your tax base, right? If your median household income is higher, there's more juice to be squeezed. If your median household income is lower, there's just less juice to be squeezed out of it. So there, it shows you the revenue effort and they kind of do this computation. And what you see is among Virginia cities, the revenue effort on average is one point two seven and shows it as a hair higher at one point three five. And you can see, again, compared to the Northern Virginia cities that we're talking about, you're higher there. And that kind of, you know, basically illustrates the point that again, you may have some room on the rate side to play with that, but there's not that much room if you want to remain competitive. Just a couple more benchmarking issues, I mean, I do think that, you know, as a whole Charlottesville is positioned well, why do I say that? You know, your fiscal, they, the Commission on Local Government, they do this computation and basically releases a figure called Fiscal Stress Index. And what it does is basically saying, you know, I'm gonna, they're gonna look at median household income, revenue capacity, kind of the base, and the revenue effort, which is the tax burden, they will get these three factors and say, what is your fiscal stress index? So if you were to imagine, you know, a place that has very low median household income and very high revenue effort, that is going to have a lot of fiscal stress, right? That's what we think of about, think of about, you know, the kind of population declining cities, low tax base but has a high tax rate. That's what this is essentially measuring. And what it shows is that, you know, I'm not surprised, and it shows that fiscal stress is higher than Old North County. Again, that's not surprising and if I flip to the next chart, you will see here, Charlottesville is actually pretty good. Why do I say that? So what I'm showing here is green is low fiscal stress and then red is high fiscal stress. Charlottesville is right here and I say it's pretty good because if you, you know, you can't see this, it's way too small, but if you look at this side of it, it's really all counties, all Northern Virginia. If you think about kind of Virginia cities are not the Northern Virginia, they're all kind of down here. So if you're looking at your population, it is pretty good. because your Richmond is definitely lower, Harrisonburg is lower. A lot of places are lower than you. So you are, from a kind of broad perspective, and you pick your apples to compare yourself with, you're doing pretty well, even though you're still considered above-average fiscal stress. Again, because much of the yellow and the green, most of them are counties, most of them are Northern Virginia. So again, all I'm saying is, you know, Charlottesville, as a city, you have the identity, right? You have the student population, you have the high property rates, higher than the county, and all those things. But generally speaking, you've been able to manage it. And that's what I'm trying to, you know, let you know at this point, that you have been able to manage it to this point. And the next step is going to be, you know, when revenue comes down, you know, what actions do you take to make sure that you remain competitive compared to your neighbors and compared to the region as a whole? One more thing here, you know, I feel like, you know, because of the ARPA money, because of the post-COVID strong revenue growth, I feel like a lot of places haven't been focused on the underlying trend. And population, at the end of the day, is the true economic driver. Places with declining population have usually a higher fiscal stress, right? Your tax base is not there. And just one thing to note here on the population side, depending on what source you use, your population trend is basically flat. And so just something to remind yourself of, as you think about kind of the economic engine, at the end of the day, is your population. And it is flat right now. And to continue to manage it, so that you don't start to see that line declining in the future. So that's on the revenue side. Let me now talk about the expenditure side, too. On the expenditure side, you know, when I think about Charlottesville, I think of kind of three slices. The first slice is the personal cost. That would include, you know, salaries, benefits, pension. The second slice is a school's contribution. And the third slice is kind of all of them. So if you think about kind of the makeup of this area, right? Your revenue is mostly tax, two-thirds of that is tax revenue, two-thirds of that is personal expenses. That's how we would think about it. And if you look at the schools, just for a second here, you know, as you know, the school's contribution has been increasing at a higher rate in the last two years, corresponding to the revenue trend. You know, I think when it comes to schools, and a lot of Virginia clients ask this question, is like, how are we going to sustain that enrollment in the future, especially given the revenue picture that we're talking about? You know, one thing I did want to show is, this is from the Wanda Cooper numbers, is that your enrollment figures is actually projected to come down a little bit. And I, you know, I don't have answers here. But I would say here is, I think it's important to consider the return on investments. It's important to consider, kind of, you know, what does enrollment trends mean for your contribution? And I know that your contribution has been increasing in part because of the ASL population and the other kind of demographic factor that is not necessarily reflected in the enrollment line here. But this is one trend to note, as you think about what does the next five years look like, given the revenue picture that I just bring for you. So this is one trend to note. And again, this is because this is one-third of the pie. It's a big driver of your investment. Personal costs is the other kind of one-third of the pie here. And I'm going to ask you to not focus on so much, on kind of the words there. But what I'm trying to highlight here is, this is a budget number. And what you see here is FY20 actuals in 2025, there was a significant increase. And I know that your actual numbers is not going to be the 84.0. I believe you will have made some savings and all those things to bring the number down. But coincidentally, your FY2016 budget actually has the exact same number, while giving wage increases, while healthcare trends and pension numbers could go up. What I'm trying to tell you is that there is just that much less room, less budgetary buffer in your FY2016 budget, right? Because FS35, you brought it this much, it would have, like, you know, hit probably somewhere around here because of vacancy savings. I don't think you're going to have that much savings in that 2016 budget, because you're having a vacancy fund. So again, on the personal cost front, as Sam said, I've been working a lot in collective bargaining. There's a lot of good investments there. But over time, you do have to manage that growth in the personal cost. And I want to talk a little bit about this, just because it's that important. You know, this is comparing 20 years difference. This is across the states, this is released by the Bureau of Labor Statistics. You know, across the US, what you see is that the compensation portfolio has changed significantly. If you look back 20 years ago, wages and salaries represent about 70% of the total personal cost. The remaining 30% is on benefits. Look at it today, the wage and salary number has dropped close to 60% because these slices have grown at a much higher rate over the last 20 years. And these are essentially taking over the compensation portfolio. So when we talk about personal cost, it's important not to think about salaries, but think about how these other slices have really driven overall personal cost growth. And this has been reflected in your budget as well. I mean, this is your healthcare fund. You know, the rent interest means a deficit. It just, your funds still have a positive balance, and it has a good 30% reserve in there. But just know that because of the reserve, you have been able to underfunds your healthcare fund a little bit, and eventually it's going to cap it. I'm not, you're in a good shape right now. It's still 30%, it's in good shape. But eventually, what you're going to see is that it will have that much of a pressure on the general fund side. Eventually, you'll start to be funding it, at least leveling it, if not going back to the old. You know, on the pension side, that's even if we're going at a higher rate. Even if you look at the last 10 years, your pension contribution has doubled from almost $7 million to almost $14 million. Your pension contributions have doubled. As a percentage of payroll, it has gone from 20% to 30%. And yet, you know, as you know, you're still not fully funded. You're still at the 70% range. And I understand the goal is to get to 80%. And you should never let up that goal. Getting to that 80% goal is a good thing. It's a good thing, because when you don't fully fund your pension, what happens is that you have to pay it back over time. I mean, this is a pretty staggering chart, in the sense that, you know, 80% of your pension contribution is to pay off your unfunded liability. And hopefully, this will shrink over time, as you get your funded level higher, right, so that you don't have to pay back your unfunded liability. But that's a consequence of not having a fully funded pension plan. And it's okay, 80% is a good goal to have, you should still get there. But just know that, you know, when you think about personal costs as a salary, so let's say, you know, increase salaries by, let's say, 5%, just hypothetically. Your healthcare cost is probably going by about 7%. That's kind of the national trends here. And your pension cost is growing by, what, 30% here, based on the double last decade. So you can see how these costs stack up, and that explains this particular chart here. The different growth rates of these higher, these benefits costs is really what drove the change of this target was why. Again, this is not the only, this is national trends. So this is what local government has to struggle with, right? This is, you know, if a big piece of their pie is personal cost, that's what they can just do. The last piece of expenditures, I want to talk about, is debt service. You know, and from a debt perspective, you have to maintain it at about 5% to 6% of total general fund spending, and that's a good thing. But just know that every new infrastructure that you put in is another thing to maintain. And that will be reflected in these, you know, debt service spending at the end of the day. So kind of, you know, thinking about it all, you know, if I think about your, again, three-quarters of your pie, the personal costs, right, growing, even if you maintain your headcount flat, that's what it grows significantly because of the pension, because of the healthcare. The school's contribution, like I said, I mean, that has been growing pretty at about 8.5%, and that's something you have to manage. And the rest of the pie is the other, and a big piece of that is your debt service, your capital investments. So even at a status quo kind of perspective, you still have to fund all of those growing costs over time. And, you know, in the last couple of years, you had the benefit of the ARPA dollars. You know, back in 2020 and 2021, you had the care side of $100,000. And you also had the year-end surplus numbers, and you were able to take a dedicated treaty for keeping priorities. But these are going away. Across, you know, the ARPA money is certainly going away. I think because of the revenue trend that we just talked about, the revenue growth coming down, the year-end surplus number is going to go away at some point. And at some point, you will have to think about kind of how to manage the inherent imbalance between revenues and expenditures. I mean, if you can think back to the property tax chart, right? If that assess value is only growing over a long-term period, by between, you know, 5% and 7%, but yet your pension is growing by 15%, your healthcare is growing by 8%, you can see that inherent imbalance there, and that is the struggle of local government these days. It's not you, like I said, that you're well-positioned, I think. But that's just the reality of the struggle of all local governments. So with that, you know, I talked a lot about these themes, but I want to highlight this one last bullet point here, is that as we think about, going back to the first part of this presentation, as we think about the recession that is maybe here, that may be coming, certainly revenue growth is slowing down across the border, across all Virginia cities and counties. You know, as you think about these kind of growing costs for the different pies of the expenditure chart, I do think the next five years, not just you, again, across all over Virginia, will be about conservation and prioritization. Unfortunately, that ARPA dollar is not coming back, right? Unfortunately, the revenue growth is slowing down. And unfortunately, the pension costs and healthcare costs, they will continue to increase, even if you don't increase headcount. We didn't even talk about collective bargaining, where, you know, those contracts will be in place. You will be committed to provide those wage increases under those agreements, regardless of your economic conditions. So the next couple of years will be about conservation and prioritization. And I sometimes joke, I sometimes joke that, you know, local government is kind of like the Amazon Prime Day. You know, you want to buy everything, but all of us can't buy everything. And so we have to find a way to prioritize our resources accordingly, again, given the economic condition and given the framework that we are in right now. So how do I move forward from that? What I just said to you over the last however minutes, the rating agencies also speak. You are, by the way, AAA community. You are selling your bonds next week, August 19. I have the date marked on my calendars. You are strong from the rating agency's perspective. You have a AAA rating. But some of the risks I highlighted here, they are also recognized again. You know, they are crediting you, this I am today, for your strong budgetary practices, for the way you have approached government finances. But they also highlight some of the risks underlying, risks that you also need to pay attention to. So again, some of these themes I highlighted, the rating agency also highlighted in their comments and their rating reports. You know, if I step back, and I hope I didn't scare you in the last hour, if I step back, there's a lot of strength there. Like, think about the revenue pie we just showed earlier. Property tax is most stable revenue source you can have, is half of your revenue picture. You know, and then when I think about, in this context of today, you know, one of the reasons Virginia cities, counties, and the Commonwealth as a whole is actually relatively okay today versus Maryland, and these are, is in part because the city is not funded by income tax. If you look at Maryland jurisdictions, a lot of the revenues are funded by income tax. DC's budget is also a big portion of that is income tax. And that's much more volatile in this day and age. So from a Virginia perspective, like, you're in a good place, or as good as it can be, given this economic condition, because of your revenue makeup. This is also why, by the way, credit rating agencies have affirmed the Commonwealth rating, but they have downgraded DC. So, you know, you do have a lot of strength there, but you do also have some of the underlying risks, right? I wouldn't be surprised, for instance, if we are in the, in our secondary meals tax sales and lodging tax coming down. I wouldn't be surprised if your population continues to flatten over time, and that will be a challenge and a risk to manage. You know, I wouldn't be surprised if some of the, you would have struggle with the capital improvement plan, because you have so much to maintain as a city government. But you have a lot of strengths, and the key here is to play to your strengths. Know where your strengths are, and play to it in the next couple of years, understanding that you have to manage all these risks. So what are the next steps here? Some of that is already in motion. You know, I think it's important to, number one stress test, your general fund, meaning, you know, what is the worst-case scenario, and can you weather it? And that analysis already shows that, I think, because of the strong budgetary practices, because of your fund balance, you know, your rating agency have acknowledged that you are in a good position to weather the storm that is coming. But the second piece here, and I think is a matter of today and tomorrow, is to establish spending parameters. Like I said, you know, on the school side, for instance, understanding what enrollment projections mean for your future contributions, right? For your personal cost, you know, a lot of work is done on the collective bargaining side, but understand how benefits spending, for instance, is driving your overall picture. You know, on the debt service side, understanding, you know, how much you're investing in just maintaining your existing infrastructure, and how much is actually added to it, and what is that trade-off there? You know, and I think, you know, prioritization is probably one word that will ring throughout this presentation and today and tomorrow, is how do you prioritize your resources, given that the revenue, you know, has slowed down significantly? How do you prioritize the resources while achieving your strategic goals? And look, I get it. You would not be here today if you didn't want to invest in the strategic priorities. No one wants to join a city government because they want to balance their budget. That's not true anymore. That is the most insensitive ever, right? No one wants to be part of government because they want to balance their budgets. But part of the role, part of my role, is to make sure that you have the resources when you need it, and that you can maintain that kind of, you know, AAA, get that kind of, you know, budgetary, strong budgetary practices that I've been talking about. So with that, let me pause. I know I looked through a lot of you.
Wow, yeah. Wow, so we got about 15 minutes for questions, and this was a lot of information. So Mike, I'll start with you. If we can just take a couple of minutes to ask questions, so we can make sure everyone gets in.
I guess to me...
We will reflect in a little bit. This is Q and A, Q and A, you have the show media.
I guess my questions would just relate around, like, UVA. And if we take that into account, how this analysis changes? Like, I'd be curious, you take out the student population, what our median income would be, and how that would change where we are? But Harrisonburg was so low, I wonder if that relates to them also being a university town? Yeah, just be curious, like, what exactly UVA's impact is in all this? Because it makes us pretty unique that it's our largest employer.
It does. Yeah, I mean, I don't have any answer to that necessarily. I think about, you probably are right, you know, it does impact the median household income and all of those factors. The tax exempt property is also probably another factor here, right? Like, you know, if they, I was in New York earlier this week, and I was like walking around Central Park, and I was thinking, what if all of this is taxable? What does that do to the debt space? But the fact is, you know, it certainly, you know, has some of the negative factors, but also it's part of the strengths of the quote, right? This is in part why you have your regional attraction. It's also, there are some, some of your sales tax, meals tax, lodging tax also comes with that. So there, I mean, well, just like any, anything really, it's a double-edged sword, and you just have to manage it. And I, I don't have answers, but I acknowledge and agree.
Ned?
So you said the fiscal, five-year fiscal plan would focus on conservation prioritization, kind of if everything stays status quo. And then you said that there's limited room to raise tax rates to increase revenues. So, but how would, how would those things be affected if we increased supply?
Supply?
Then it's a housing supply.
Housing supply.
Yeah.
Like, that would redistribute that, correct?
Yeah, so by increasing housing supply, you would aim to increase your taxable base, your taxable assess values. And, you know, to be, you know, there are places that have a lot of greenland that when they build houses, I'm thinking of, like, you know, Loudoun County, for instance, right? Like, when they build a lot of housing, that was significant. I think that the bottom line, that we haven't done the analysis on that, we certainly can. The bottom line is how much of that increase, your taxable base? How much of that is taxable? How much of that, and how would that, with the needle, taxable assess value be? And I haven't done the analysis on that, but I think, you know, it's, part of it is also, like, you know, your tax base has been growing by 5% to 7% in the last two years. So in order to, you know, grow it, you're looking to grow it beyond the 7%. You have to grow it beyond the base that is already growing. So you're looking at, okay, can that actually add 3% growth to my tax base? What does 3% translate to in terms of dollars? And you can certainly dedicate those dollars to something else. But again, earlier point, right? If your pension is growing by 50% a year, your healthcare is growing by 8%. There is already an status quo imbalance that you can manage. So you do want to make sure that supply is above or beyond, right? Yeah, I agree.
Okay, thank you.
Sort of continuing on some of these other notions. I guess one of the things that I've always been trying to puzzle out is, like Michael raised a question about the effect of university students. We know that there are plans underway to house a couple thousand more university students in apartments right around the university, which will be in the city. in apartments right around the university, which will be in the city, perhaps drawing from people, university students who are living in the county. But those students, those students aren't contributing. On the one hand, they're not typically costing us more beds or more desks in schools. But they're also not contributing the same amount of taxable value as if it's a family moving into a half a million dollar home that's new. How do we figure out what's actually likely to happen with that kind of influx? Is there a way, or do we just sort of say, well, we'll just have to see what happens?
There is certainly a way. I mean, if you really want to know an answer, like, there's certainly, we do this two fiscal impact studies and figure out, okay, if you build a new apartment building here, what is the economic effect of that? And how much actually is the economic effect, and how much of that actually affects what the revenue is? They're not exactly the same thing. So there is a way to figure it out, you know.
Is it worth worrying about?
That's what I was trying to, that's my basic point. It's like, how much does it, I think the key here, and to your question too, how much does it move the needle?
Yeah.
Right? I think that's the key here. And, you know, as, and I did, you know, as part of listening to these kind of economic developments that are coming online, I know those are great news. You just have to make sure that is above and beyond, yeah. And if they are not above and beyond, that is not external.
I'm looking at the, one of the weaknesses that you pointed out is that our population seems to be at least stable and perhaps declining, depending on whether you're looking in Weldon Cooper or looking at other sources. And if the answer is that, well, it's actually likely to increase in the next couple of years, but in a way that doesn't actually help us much, in a way that doesn't actually move the needle, what have we accomplished? So anyway, that's, that's sort of the long, the long term issue that I guess we're gonna have to wait and see.
I think we do have a really good data point there, which is when the apartment buildings were built on West Main, school enrollment went up a trailblazer because families were able to move into the houses that were previously occupied by students. So I don't know how many students live in the county that it would affect, but there's definitely a lot of students who live in the city that space would then shift.
I would, I would just add, to me, the question of studying the student apartments feels like a huge thing. Because Weldon Cooper did a presentation in June to the Regional Housing Partnership. And not that they're, they could be wrong, but they said they looked at that study again and found that students in single family homes in Charlottesville no longer exist like they did. So they said they didn't predict that new student apartments would open up homes that lead to an increase in school enrollment. Obviously, our school enrollment has been flat over twenty years. So I am curious, just like, what is the effect? Because maybe it's positive because we don't have to pay for the school cost of students. So maybe it's even better from a revenue perspective. I don't know. But it seems like we're so driven by that student apartment growth primarily, like, I don't know what that could mean, but.
Well, and also, how long do they stay students? Like, you know, and the more of them that grow, maybe some become just apartments for anybody.
Yeah, just a couple of things. It would be nice if we could actually have the population graphs like we all agree on, what those numbers are, been on House of Forty Years.
Sure, I understand that.
It's kind of hard for me to believe that the population is going down, given the fact that price houses continue to go up. But the second thing I would say is, if you think about schools, every year, we go through this process, and they're not criticizing, they're all doing their job to represent the kids. They, they're kind of funny, they'll, they'll bring us what they call the needs based budget, as opposed to, I don't know, whatever other kind of budget they might have. But every year, it's significant lift. And a lot of it is just because of the nature and the history of the city. The refugee home, and that is, that's expensive. And then the final thing I'll mention is just the CIP. The schools, I'm assuming you include the school buildings, but the CIP as opposed to schools proper. From my perspective, the city has not invested in building stock like it should have over the course of the last fifty years. And so we're playing catch up, which is part of what some of these spikes are. So, do you all have a question? As well, if you have a question.
That's a good point. It's more just an answer. Juan, questions?
Yeah, I just got a couple of, so Natalie kind of got to this. My comment was like, you know, in the new zoning ordinance that we have, and I know that, you know, we're trying to settle on that now, but that calls for increased population with new housing. And so I guess we would have to kind of just do a study to see with that increase, stock, what impact that would have on maybe some, some of your numbers. And something that you said, that you said that new infrastructure means that we have to maintain it. I'm thinking of a thing like Charlotte, Buford Middle School, which is now, so. And so with older building, it's a lot of maintenance with that. I know we have to maintain a new building, but, you know, things like that, we make those type of trade offs. Is it, you know, is it about the same, you know? So, and my other question was, I know that the city schools are VRS, and local government was self insured or retirement, is that? So if we were with VRS, would that mean anything different, you know, with a bigger pool?
Yeah, yeah. I can't definitively answer that without, you know, doing probably even the rarities to like do the analysis. But, you know, Virginia cities, there are places that have, you know, switched to VRS. I'm like, first I've been there before, used to do that a while ago. There are places that switched to VRS. The key that drives ultimately the pension contribution is the benefit levels, right? So switching plan may, I don't know what changes that, but ultimately, the savings that, if you're looking for ultimately pension saving, you're looking at benefit levels. You're looking at, you know, there are a couple of levels you play with. You're contributing more now, right? Like, you're making more contribution contributions with the goal that you're reducing upper liability, right? That's one way you're trying to manage your pension contribution. But another level to play is the level of benefits. And so I, I don't think, again, I'm not an actuary, but I would say switching plans per, just, you know, it doesn't necessarily change the matter. It may have some changes because of the way things were funded, but ultimately, if you're looking, you would have to look at better.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Glad to hear your question.
Thank you very much.
Well, you all have that hard copy stuff.
Yes.
You know where to find it.
So before we dive in, and then I'm in between you and lunch right now. So what I'm trying to do, at the very beginning, when we started talking, we talked about, you participated in a little bit of exercise of, without a deep understanding, and all we did was explore ideas and materialize, we would have blank outcome. So the purpose of some of our reflective exercises, the purpose of you being able to do a Q and A and get some information is because I'm asking, I'm putting you in a position to get a deep understanding, because I will ask you to tap into that understanding tomorrow as we begin to explore. So thank you for asking the questions. Thank you for participating in this kind of reflective exercise with me. Because what I'm trying to do is get you that understanding toolbox. So, you know, we sat through a lot of presentations, a lot of information, been taking notes, reflecting on it. I think I got a good understanding, and I'm like, awesome. Tomorrow, we're going to explore some things based off that understanding. So with that being said, can we do the urban interview one more time? In the middle of it, can you write, I think what we're called is a financial update for the most part? So in the middle of that, please write a financial update. And then go ahead and, high level, this is your ability to not dive into the weeds, but reflect on just the status and remember, it's about the current status and where it is. What do I understand about the financial update? What do I respect about the final, the financial update? What do I value as I just was presented around where it is? A few, a few more minutes, you reflect on your notes, what's kind of what you heard. Heard the financial update, what I understand, what I value. Sir, we start us off.
Yes.
Grab a financial update, tell us what you understand, what you respect, and what you value.
So what I understand is that there's not a lot of room for the city as far as financial growth. We don't, it's not, you know, we're pretty much at the max of our options. So what I respect is the city's financial leadership. We, you know, I see all of the different things that they have to factor in to kind of get us where we are when we even talk about a half percent, a quarter percent, or whatever. So it's a lot to consider. And what I value is the city's AAA bond rating, those things. I know it's hard to maintain that, but I know that also it saves us a lot of money when we have to. Is it August 19th?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, no, absolutely, thank you. Brian, what do you understand, respect, and value about where the current financial update and stats, where we are?
Yeah, we're in a relatively good position compared to other people, but the risks fly ahead.
That's your understanding, right?
Correct.
Got it, yeah, okay.
I respect, like Juan said, our staff and their attention to our money, dollars and nickels. Value, I see the importance of prioritization.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
So my understanding, it is a narrow financial path on which we are walking. There, I respect the fact that there are lots of smart people who are working on this, even though they may not agree with one another. And finally, I value the willingness to nevertheless dive in and get nerdy.
Yeah, yeah, love that.
I understand that we're doing okay, but things are precarious, and the status quo will not sustain us, so change is inevitable. The parts we can control are generally well managed. Very much respect our team there. And then I value our AAA bond rating. I know that's very, very crucial.
Yeah, it's a good value. Sir?
Say, I understand our revenue picture is, to me, fairly strong. There probably is, you know, relatively limited room to increase some of our tax rates. We have a stable primary employer in UVA, and we can't understand our budget without taking into account UVA on multiple dynamics. I respect that there is a lot of uncertainty. Federal government funding, even population growth, like, it's certainly absolutely possible new zoning increases population. What if the market just doesn't respond that way? Or what if population growth is primarily students? Is that good, bad, indifferent? Uncertainty with, could we get options for new revenue sources with sales tax or a tax for regional transportation? What do I value? That Seville, Charlottesville spends a lot more on priorities that most communities don't. Like, the amount we spend on affordable housing or social services is substantially higher than most localities, and that's part of our budget picture, because we've made a conscious choice to invest in priorities that other communities don't.
Yeah, yeah, very true. No, thank you, thank you for sharing that, I appreciate that. Is lunch coming to us?
About twelve fifteen.
Okay, all right. So in about nine-ish minutes, lunch will be brought to us. Let me give you kind of the rundown a little bit of how that's gonna work. So you all can, there's the courtyard, there is the actual other large room there. There's also the coffee shop. Take your lunch, go wherever it is that you want to. We're gonna take about a thirty minute lunch, about a half hour. Probably don't recommend hanging out in here, just because you're gonna be in here all day. So I would like, just, you know, go in. But if you want to, you can absolutely hang out in here, that's fine. But we have three different areas. You can go to the courtyard, you can go to the large Wall Factory room, or the coffee shop, that's downstairs as well. And we're looking at about twelve fifteen, lunch will be brought up. Cool? Appreciate you all. Thank you, yes.
All right, so we're gonna get back to it. Still staying in the frame of where it is. This next section of what we're gonna do is, we took you very high level. That's what this morning's conversation was about, the community surveys, or what our people say about everything. Your strategic priority areas are reminding you what you did, thinking about what you said in the past couple of years. And then giving you the financial outlook, so that's kind of bringing it down a layer, kind of making it a little challenging, a little tough, seeing what some of the realities may be. And now we're gonna dive in. So we're diving in, but we're only diving in to your top three priorities. And that's being housing, transportation, and education. And the reason we're labeling them as top priorities is because we talk about them a lot. We spend a lot of money in these categories already, and we recognize that there's a lot of opportunities to spend in each of these categories with how we frame what we're talking about or allow ourselves to talk about. So the rest of what we're gonna be doing is spending all of our energy here on these three topics. And the reason for that is because there's stuff to figure out, decide, think about, and consider within each one of these, that if we can figure some of that out, it helps us figure out how to pull the levers on other things. So that's exactly why we're choosing to not bring you down low, but we're not asking you to make a decision. So we're gonna keep reminding you, don't go in the weeds. We're just showing you that there are weeds ahead, and then we'll get to that, because that's what the budget process really is all about.
Randy? In addition to, say, I'm kind of communicating that the reason why the priorities, can they take a brunt of your time, resources, conversation, money, people, all those things? But they also are top priorities for other reasons. Inside of each of them, they each have tensions, trade offs, and opportunities inside. In each of these opportunities, along with brunt of resources, brunt of time, brunt of conversation, inside of them why they're top is because they also hold tensions, they also hold trade offs, and they also hold opportunities. So I want to kind of talk about these definitions, but I'm going to highlight some areas that are important. So regarding tensions, where I want us to focus on, because I'm gonna ask you to listen with this lens a little bit. Tensions being forced between two or more needs, values, or priorities that can exist at the same time. What I'm gonna ask you, is that you agree with me that that's what we're gonna call tensions? For trade offs, conscious decisions to prioritize one option, value, or outcome over another. What is the exchange or trade off? That's a, that's what a trade off is. That's what a tension is. And for opportunities, potential pathway insight or moment that emerges, that's what an opportunity is. So I want to kind of put these in this context, because this, again, this is the lens of which I'm gonna ask you to kind of listen to the next upcoming presentations with. But I want to kind of put it in this order. Most of the time, whenever we hear something, we immediately jump into here, kind of like going to explore what we understand, right? But it is good to understand the tensions, understand the trade offs. Because if we don't have information, this understanding, how do we ever think about the proper opportunities that emerge? It can only emerge from tensions and trade offs. Obviously, it can emerge like it is of itself. There is something going on inside of it that it will produce an opportunity, but I would first need to understand blank and blank. So my hope is that you get to hear and listen with the ears of, what are the tensions that I just heard? What are the trade offs from what I'm kind of hearing? And then from those two things, what potentially is an opportunity? With me so far? Cool? Awesome. So where it is, what's in the, what's in the way or could be in the way? So this is kind of where we shift a little bit. We are still in the understanding phase. This is around taking in information and sitting with it. We will get to exploring, creating, ideating, all that stuff a little later. But if you're worried about where it is, what's in the way, or what could be in the way, all regarding those strategic priorities. Okay, makes sense? So by the time you're done listening, you will have known where it is, what's in the way of that strategic priority, or what could be in the way of housing, education, and transportation. With me?
Yep.
Awesome. Cool. So I'm gonna hand it over to James. The top strategic priority number one, and where it is and what's in the way, you're gonna get to here from James and Ashley. James is gonna touch on where it is, current opportunity status, and Ashley will touch on what's in the way or what could be in the way. So please feel free to also take notes, shape your notes, build your toolbox, because I'm gonna ask you to tap into that tomorrow, okay? With that being said, James, after you, sir.
All right, good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon.
Uh, so where it is, we're talking about housing. Reminder of the strategic priority area as it was defined by you, these are your words. Charlottesville defines access to livable housing as a human right and works to ensure housing choices and mobility are provided for all who seek it through the implementation of the Affordable Housing Plan. So at all, at this point, we are kind of down one more level, as Sam said, but we're still gonna be pretty high level. As you guys know, if we actually got deep into the weeds on housing, we could do this for the whole, rest of the, like, rest of our time together today and tomorrow. But keeping it with where we are, just a refresher on the Affordable Housing Plan, right? This was a really, a really important document, a central document for the city that kicked off our Seville plans together process. March 2021, we adopted the Affordable Housing Plan, which is that the city of Charlottesville will achieve a local housing market that is healthy, high-quality, affordable, and above all equitable. We have guiding principles of racial equity, regional collaboration, and a comprehensive approach. And most significantly, our major initiatives. 10 million annually, over 10 years, on affordable housing, building inclusive governments, and adopting progressive and inclusion zoning reform. But I'll remember those. And the Affordable Housing Plan, overall, had a lot of different recommendations on it, related to funding and staffing, tenants' rights. There was a lot of stuff even beyond those three high priority objectives. And significantly, we had income targeted, right? What were we trying to get to? We were trying to ensure that 50% of our, of our spending would be directed towards 30% of AMI, 60%, uh, I'm sorry, 30% at 60% of AMI, and then 20% of GAV of AMI. So even at this point, we were trying to focus on the most affordable level of housing. So where, where are we ended up so far in this process? We are clearly hitting our 10 million annually towards affordable housing. Only inclusive governments were making progress in that space. The Housing Advisory Committee in particular has been, been thinking about and talking about that, where we can go from there. And then, of course, we made significant progress with the adoption of zoning ordinance back in, in the 2023. But even at the point where we were adopting this plan, there were a couple of things that the Affordable Housing Plan noted, right? One of these things, kind of things, has already noted, that we were making a level of investment in affordable housing above and beyond what you typically see for a city of our size. That we are, as we often say, punching above our weight loss, we are doing a lot more than any other communities. So this was the original breakdown of the, of the spending that City of West spent. 7 million per year on direct housing investment, 2 million per year on tax relief and housing stability programs, and 1 million on our administrative capacity. Staffing that would get us to our ability to, to maintain this program. Now, the, the, um... The other key point about this that I've been stretching forward at this point, uh, spent... Well, I'll come back. So where, oh, as soon as I, as soon as I, there, I remember where I was going.
See how that opportunity arose in the middle of that tension? You saw that?
What made me lose it?
Yeah, no, sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
That, the other thing that was recognized, even as we were adopting this plan, right at the very beginning, was a recognition that already commitments the city had made within its CIP was meeting our first five years towards this target. This was that. The first five years of $7 billion per year was already accounted for in our CIP. It's an important point because the plan was, was, was kind of previewing the idea that we were gonna be wrestling with tensions and trade-offs around this spending going forward. So in the first FY '22 to FY '25 time period, on average, these are average numbers, and I'd ask you, this is casting back a bit to the update we got from our housing team. Antoine Williams made a presentation back in the spring around the status of our, of our implementation of the Affordable Housing Plan. Casting it back to that, these are, uh, these are derived from his presentation. Right now, we are at 9.8 billion on our investments. 2.4 in tax relief, of course, a reflection that that need has been higher than we might have anticipated as we worked on the plan. And significantly, at about $300,000 on building that administrative capacity, the staffing support, and additional things that we need to, to advance this planning process.
Is that okay? Like, are we missing out things because our admin capacity is not what we intended, or are we doing better?
We'll come back to that.
Okay.
Looking ahead, looking at the commitments that we've now gotten to, similar to when we adopted the Affordable Housing Plan initially, we can look ahead at what we put into our CIP and see that, again, we've, we've met this, we've exceeded this objective of direct housing investment. As I'm projecting forward, I didn't try and guess what this need would actually arrive at, so I just kind of went back to what the Affordable Housing Plan called for. And went back to, again, what the Affordable Housing Plan called for. And this to arrive at a total annual cost of, again, estimated and averaged, what, 13.57 billion in our investments towards the Affordable Housing Plan. To your question, do we, do we need additional staff support? I think a lot of people would say yes. That there is work we need to be doing in the monitoring space, in the managing space, and in particular, on how we are collecting data about our progress here. If you kind of think back to the bookends that we were talking about, that Josh was talking about early on, around setting direction and then measuring progress. We, we, there's more that we need in terms of figuring out how we measure, well, there's more we need in order to support our ability to measure progress in this space. So we see the, we see the numbers, but then we also look at our pipeline of units coming onboard. We've got, and think back to the targets the Affordable Housing Plan set. We are readily hitting our targets on the 80% of AMI. We are, we are exceeding our target in terms of the 30 to 60% of AMI. But in the most affordable category, we are still not quite hitting the goals that we established in the Affordable Housing Plan as we look at how the unit, how the, how the pipeline of affordable units is working so far. And then, just coming back to the adoption of the zoning ordinance, I think one of the big things we've learned, and we talked about this, it wasn't, wasn't really, it's not really a new idea, but one of the things, business things we've learned is that zoning was not really the only thing we needed to invest. As soon as we took away the barrier represented by zoning, what rose up of all the other barriers that were built in to our regulatory environment? And so we have more work to do in this space. We have to look at other development codes, other pieces of our ordinance that impact the development process, and assess them against our objectives in the housing production arena. Because I think we've talked about a lot of where that, where that needs to happen, and that work is already happening. And we need to continue to make changes to develop code itself. We promised when we adopted it that we would continue to revisit that code, that we didn't see it was written in stone, and that work is ongoing as well. So then we've talked about the fact that there's, there's three impact areas, and there'll be three impact areas for each one of, of these strategic priority areas that we're talking about. First of these impact areas is, is on the issue of homelessness. And we have our unhoused individuals estimated well over 200. I think there are currently much of 245, 260 at this point. Just an accounting of the costs that we're, that we're, have made commitments to relative to this issue. You know, these 3 million was Salvation Army, 1 million for Salvation Army's revenue offset, and then recurring costs into the local area shelter, Hops, and RAP. For terms of our impact in the production and preservation of affordable housing, one of those things, and this is where it's coming back to it, is ensuring that we have the ability to build a dashboard that really accurately tracks the status of, the status of affordable unit production. Both straight, a number of production, but also where we are arriving in AMI numbers, understanding the timeline for when those units come online and those types of things. And also understanding when they might actually come offline, right? Because we understand, right now, at least, we are aware of two projects with a total of 360 units that are at risk of expiring affordability just in 2026.
Which ones are those?
One of them is Hearthstone, I believe is the name of it. What's that?
Hearthstone.
Hearthstone, yep, thank you. And then there's, there's another one, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna remember the name of it, but it's 160 units. Hearthstone is 200 units, the other one is 160 units. Both of them, the affordability provisions from when they were built in 1996 expired in 2026. They're both 30-year. Doesn't necessarily mean that the, the order of those properties is going to immediately raise that, but it's certainly a risk that exists for both of us. But when we think of impacts of accessible housing for all...
So, I'm sorry, James, can you go back one?
Yep.
So staff is working on a dashboard to track affordable units in, in production. So I'm not sure if I can answer this question if it was asked, asked directly of me, but maybe you all can. If someone says, last year, you all, the city dedicated $7 million to affordable housing, and $2 million for tax relief. Could you, could we be able to say, yes, we got 160? What are, are we able to now, it seemed like we're doing a good job of tracking what's planned and things, but do we know where the $7 million, what we got for it?
Well, you remember the production...
I'm sorry. No, the ROI, right? Return of investment.
Remember, the, the production kind of lags behind the investment. The, but, so one of the things that we're trying to do is actually build a pipeline that shows a direct relationship when those dollars come into a project, and where that project is on the, on the, on the timeline of approval, construction beginning, construction ending, and occupancy. So that we can show that direct relationship between the city's dollars coming in and the production of units going forward. We also want to capture more than just what the city is directly funding, but also capture what else is happening in the marketplace that's contributing towards our housing goals. So I, I know that so much regulatory work is left to do, that is a reference to the fact that, in terms of accessible housing for all, this idea that it's not just about the deed restricted, the subsidized affordability that we're producing, but it's also about building out a housing market that meets the needs across the entire spectrum of, of housing needs within the, within the city at all income levels. That's, the answer there is about our zoning ordinance, that our zoning ordinance is leading to a housing market that is, that is responsive to the needs of our population. Producing units of all types, meeting people at different stages of life, but we just know that there's more work that needs to happen in order to open up that more market-responsive housing system. And then going on, taking advantage of the fact that this new zoning ordinance creates an opportunity to build systems and programs that, that allow more people to get engaged in the housing production space. That's, there's a significant opportunity there for small-scale builders to actually help us solve the problem. For people to have new job opportunities, contributing towards housing supply, and recognizing that that marketplace of housing, where we move away from, not move away from, but we supplement the existing system that is about large projects, that are very much dependent on large-scale market conditions and the state of global economy, because that's how their financing comes in. That, that, that not, the, that market production of large-scale projects is gonna go up and down as the market goes up and down. It's the availability of dollars in the marketplace goes up and down. Smaller-scale builders are gonna be less, they're, they're gonna have a, a varied source of, of funding, but also less risk exposure. If I'm doing two units, if I'm doing four units, if I'm doing six units, I've got less risk exposure. I'm, I'm more likely to be able to continue and carry forward despite market conditions. And so the, the more we can build out that cohort of small-scale builders, the more we can create a, of, a, a housing production system that's meeting the needs of all city residents, future and current. If, 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 uh... The more we can build that out, the more our housing, our, our housing market can be less dependent on larger economic factors. And part of that, part of making that happen is moving into this idea of actually pre-permitting buildings, making it easier to get those permits in place in the first place.
Yeah, just, just on, on that, I, I've heard that it's definitely gotten better, but I still hear of the red tape that's, you know, part of the changeover of staff, changeover of the zoning ordinance, but it's still preventing some people, developers, from building housing. It's just, you know, a part of it's like, maybe they remember what it was four or five years ago, and it's never come back, so.
You're right, you're still standing here to work the development process. Do you wanna open it up for a few minutes on where it is, housing in the three impact areas? Any questions on, from James, from what he shared with you? You gotta get him for a couple of minutes, we're already a Q and A of what he just shared. And these are questions, any, any questions to help you gain any information on, on what he just presented? You can go back to any slide if, if you want it or anything like that as well.
The numbers of housing that you, I can't remember just coming onboard, is that, does that include UVA beds? Does that include?
That is just, that is just the pipeline of city-funded projects.
Just what our dollars have touched, right?
Yes.
So like the Bloom and the Verve are part of that?
Yeah.
It seemed like those would be good numbers to have too.
Absolutely. Ultimately, we need, we need to be tracking all unit production, but that was particularly focused on our subsidized housing production at 80% of AMI and less. So those are all projects that the city has contributed in. And looking at where our, it's our city dollars contributed in, so where, where are we facilitating those different levels of, of, of building?
Jake, before, before June 30th, when Judge Worrell's ruling changed the picture for the zoning ordinance, how were we doing in terms of getting proposals into a pipeline, or any of them getting close to getting approved?
No, we, I, I think quite honestly, where the, the number of units coming into the system was low. So right out of the gate with the adoption of zoning ordinance, we also instituted a pre-permitting, a pre-application meeting to, as a way to try and facilitate projects coming in, and we were oversubscribed right off the bat, right? Those were everyone's say, and we had strong interest, lots of projects trying to come in with the work. But what quickly became apparent was this range of other regulatory obstacles.
Like what sorts of obstacles?
Stormwater is a, is a big one. That's, that's one of the primary blocks.
Is that a council fix? Is that something that you gotta fix? Is it a state regulatory fix?
A little bit of all three of those, right? So we have a, a higher standard for stormwater management in the city than what the state requires. And that's, that's not to say that's a bad thing, but it does incur an additional cost, particularly on these smaller projects. And, and some of the analysis we've got to show that that is, that, that department is one of the reasons the smaller-scale projects haven't been able to get off the ground. And that's where a lot of this activity, a lot of the interest is in these smaller projects, townhouses, cottages, those types of things.
So ADU stuff, and so if you're building a backyard...
So ADU stuff, and so if you're building a backyard, do you really need a retention fund? And is that gonna kill the product?
So when we're in a little bit of a hiatus right now with the overall zoning ordinance, is this an opportunity for us to fill that?
We are, yeah, we are absolutely looking on that. You all, you all will see. So one of, if you cast back your minds to the priority projects that we discussed a while ago, that Kelly Brapp has also brought forward, one of those is our review of our environmental regulations across the board. That, that is, all of that plays in this conversation. Is to steal from a future conversation, the trade-offs and tensions between the high value on our environmental regulation and high value placed on housing production.
Any other questions before we get into housing? What is in the way, or what could be in the way?
What, if any, in-house capacity exists to study some of these questions? Because housing is obviously very hyper-local market. How is there a way to objectively evaluate how much of a barrier is stormwater? Or if the primary supply is large student apartments, how do we study the exact effects of that? Is filtering occurring? If so, where? Because it's just gonna be super, super local.
Yeah. I mean, on a capacity side, I'll say that one of the things we've been able to do is build out a longer planning team. And that's where a lot of the work is happening in, like this, new review of our environmental regulations, as well as the smaller we plan for Temple Page and North Hill. That work is now focused and has a dedicated set of staff to work on it. Housing is a tricky piece right now, in terms of our ability to do housing studies and various studies.
Just one other question is, understandably, the focus is on regulatory constraints. I've heard from developers and organizations like Strong Towns have really focused on this, that the missing middle that we really want the most, like triplexes, fourplexes, one of the biggest barriers is the financing beyond anything even regulatory, even though regulatory is a part of it. Do you have a sense of how much ability to access financing is impacting the ability to bring those projects online? And is there anything we can do on the financing side, which I've seen some cities have started to get into that?
That's a, that's a really interesting question, and I don't have the answer to that question here at City Charles. But I'm familiar with exactly what you're talking about, yeah. I can tell you actually that moving towards this idea of pre-permitting some of these small building types actually can help to unlock some of that financing, because it reduces risk, which makes dollars money.
Cool, thank you. Cool, so before we dive in to what is in the way, or what could be in the way, when we're still talking housing, and it was really important to track those three impact areas. These are all my helpful hints, by the way, so I'm like, write that down! Remember these areas! I promise it's for a reason. So it's really good to remember those impact areas, and especially regarding housing. And so we'll talk about housing, kinda you'll still hear those impact areas and a little more, and what's in the way and what could be in the way. Happy, ma'am?
Thank you. You all are taking a little bit of my thunder, so some of the things you just said, you're gonna see. But my role here is to...
Great minds think alike.
Love that. But my role here is to help you all think through some things that could be in the way of your goals, and what is in the way now. So when we think about, in housing specifically, we've got this impact area of homelessness. So some things that are in the way right now. We've talked about that investment in housing stock for 30% of AMI and under. James just showed you how we're not hitting that target. If we're thinking about our homeless population, they're not even necessarily gonna be at 30% AMI. They're gonna be at 0%, 10%, maybe 20%, depending on if they're bringing in social security disability, if they're able to work and not have an address. By the way, it's extremely hard to get a job on a job application if you have no address. We're thinking about the impacts of that lack of accessibility, also of a low-barrier shelter. So we know that we have some accessibility through our Salvation Army program, but that's what we call high barrier. You need to meet certain points of criteria in order to stay there. But we are a community that at this point in time does not have a year-round low-barrier shelter for adults. We do not have a year-round low-barrier shelter for families, and we do not have one that's a little more flexible, that say you're an adult and you're a caregiver. We separate by gender, for example. So there are people where even if we had this shelter, maybe they couldn't avail themselves of it because they are a caregiver of an adult of a different gender. And one person may have to go somewhere, and one person may have to go another where, another place. Another interesting point with those barriers can include companion animals as well. And then we also know what's in the way is some fragmented service delivery with our agencies. There's also a lack of accountability for those outcome achievements. You all are investing in this work. James showed you that slide. However, we as an organization, we as a community, have often said, "You're doing well, and we thank you for it." But are you all getting, as Joshua just said, the return on investment for that, those dollars as well? We're thinking about that return on investment by units, by preservation. Are you all thinking about the return on investment and whether you're getting what you want out of your philanthropic dollars as well? Now, some things that could be in the way. We've got that loss or reduction of federal and state homelessness funding streams. You all have seen that on the news, when we lose those curricular safety net benefits, even with Lytec, for example, being bolstered, that won't help necessarily your homeless individuals, right? We've got a determination, or we've got to think about that continuing, continuation or increases to the city's reoccurring investment in programs, specifically to provide housing access to those who are currently unsheltered. Again, you all made some major one-time investments in our Salvation Army. We have some investments in some of our other surrounding programming. But how do you all want to think about that? And if it needs to go up, thinking about that loss of some other revenues that those nonprofits may base, is that something that would be the pleasure of the city to do? Then we're also thinking about that rising demand due to economic and climate-driven displacement. As Van shared with us, we might be in a recession, if it's possible. And if we are, that certainly is going to have negative impacts on some of our most vulnerable community members. Now, you all didn't think I could leave out social determinants of health, so I didn't. And when we think about that area of homelessness for our social determinants of health, remember that housing stability is a determinant of health. It is very hard to stay healthy if you do not have a home. And those gaps can increase healthcare costs. It can increase worsening, it can worsen chronic conditions, and it can strain our emergency services. When we think about that production and preservation of housing, again, some things that might be in the way right now. There's limited developer interest. It's really hard to make a project for 30% and under work financially. Little easier for 30 to 50% AMI. Little bit more easier for that 51% to 80%, right? But it's all still very different than saying, "I'm going to build luxury condos," right? We've got some aging affordable housing stock at risk of loss. James shared that we have two projects right now that in 2026 could lose affordability. And right now, again, as James shared, we don't really have a good way to collect and analyze that data to think about the efficacy of our investments in those available unit production and preservation. Now, what could be in the way? Construction costs. Again, everything is rising. And those are gonna outpace some of those subsidies, outpace some of those, the investment that even we're providing. We've got federal program changes again, which is gonna impact some of that tax credit competitiveness. And again, that expiration of affordability where existing units could be lost. Adding that into our concept of those social determinants of health, affordable, quality housing directly impacts economic mobility and opportunity, educational attainment possibilities, as well as people's physical health. Now we're thinking about that third impact area. So that affordability of housing for our full community, right? So what's in the way? Rapid rent escalation in market rate units. So we do have individuals here who are not on what we consider low incomes. That still doesn't mean that they can afford housing. And those are individuals that are our teachers. They are individuals that are our civil servants. And they are really experiencing a bit of a squeeze right now and cannot live here. There's a mismatch between wages and housing costs. Very amazing work that this city, that these, that as council you all have supported in ensuring that we are paying a good, solid wage to our staff members, whether they are affiliated or non-affiliated. That doesn't always happen in all of our businesses here, right? And so when we got that mismatch, not everyone can afford housing, even if they do not fall under, for example, federal poverty law. And then we've got that zoning reform legal challenge, which creates uncertainty. If you're a developer, you maybe don't know what you wanna do. And so with that, that means it may slow down the production of new units, right? And what could be in the way? We've got population growth without proportional housing supply expansion. We know we're floating, and I'm in the same way, but people still need housing. If you notice the line that was shown earlier today, it's not that our growth is flat, we're not flat-plate. We are moving somewhat, right? And those individuals still need housing and shelter. And we also saw that daytime versus nighttime residency. What if some of those daytime individuals actually would like to live here and can? And then we also have that reduction in state and local rent relief programs. I will tell you, our pathways program has had to continuously change their criteria to make sure they have money to last throughout the year. Your Home to Hope team, while we say they are not a housing program, they're a housing program, because they are doing unduplicated work. And I recall from Sam's presentation, someone said that our focus on housing is so that regular folks can afford to live here. That's what this slide is really focusing in on. So when we think about those social determinants of health, again, anytime we have those widening affordability gaps, we're increasing economic segregation, we're limiting workforce stability, and we're heightening health disparities, because most individuals, we often talk about those who are on low incomes, but most individuals are about one paycheck from being unsheltered. So we see these numbers of individuals who are on those certifiable, lower-income levels. But those, in human services, we also talk about muddy middle. Those individuals who are in the muddy middle at any time are one toothache, one car repair, one something away from falling into homelessness, and then coming to use our services.
Before we do that, move back. I wanna give you Ashley for a few minutes, so feel free to ask any questions to help you get an understanding about what's in the way, or what could be in the way regarding housing and these impact areas.
Can you go back to the slide on the list? So I offer this as a comment and an observation, not necessarily a question, I don't know if it's too...
I'll allow it.
From my own door knocking this past spring, one of the things that's in the way, one of the things that's in the way is lack of community consensus on where to put a low-barrier shelter.
What was that second part, sorry?
Lack of community consensus on where to put a low-barrier shelter. Lots and lots of good liberals are criticizing or judging, but are just as nimbious when it comes to having a, all of the unfair, as well as reasonable concerns about having a shelter near their children, near their school, near whatever. That is real. It's in Belmont, it's in Fightville, it's Martha Jeff. And so there's a real disconnect in our community between people that wanna send a lot of emails because we're trying to clean up under the bridge, because they're concerned about the humanity of his people, understandably, and people's willingness to actually host that nearby. Now, I don't have the statistics, but I'll just tell you that it was a common theme when I did my door knocking. And I think it's something that the next council is going to have to get in front of and have hard conversations.
A few more minutes with Ashley, any other questions?
I had a quick question. Ashley, Ashley, what is your, many of the unhoused that we have in our community, they, I mean, I don't know the percentage, but they, the mental health, they're... What is our capacity to support them? Do we, is it just Region 10, or, you know, I'm not sure of the answer of that?
Sure. So one of the things that if I could maybe add as a side impact area of all of these are the wraparound supports, because everything you all have prioritized as Councilmember Osterman noted at the beginning, were kind of all interwoven in to care for people, whether it's schools, whether it's housing, whether it's transportation. So when we think about individuals who are unsheltered, medical need is paramount, period, just medical supports. But there are some individuals who find themselves unsheltered that do need some mental health care. In that realm, we do not have enough mental health care options and professionals that are accessible, by the way, not only to individuals who have fallen into homelessness, but remember I said there's about one in four individuals can fall into homelessness at any time, right? They also don't have access, and that access could keep them in housing and prevent more individuals from falling into this impact area that you all are thinking about. Region 10 does an excellent job with the amount of work they can do, with them being quasi-state that gives limitations. UVA has clinics. They still have limitations, but there is just a lack of mental health care professionals in the nation, but also professionals who want to do this work, because as a mental health professional, I also can, for example, go work for Better Health and listen to someone, oh, telephonically, where I don't have to leave my home, or perhaps, you know, put myself in a space where I'm uncomfortable. They have options. And so I would say that those wraparound supports, where I was talking about that fragmented service delivery, that included access to physical health care and mental health care. Because when we can wrap people with those supports, they stabilize better. But universally, one of the ways that we can also stabilize people is get them into housing, because once you're into housing, getting you to your medical appointments is a lot easier, or bringing someone to you. Getting a job is a lot easier. All of the things that we need you to do to stabilize is a whole lot easier if you have some sort of consistent shelter option.
Last minute, please.
I really appreciate the list that you all came up with. But as Brian kind of indicated by wanting to add something to the list, there are things that we've noticed that could probably be added to the list. So I don't know if we're doing that later, but on this slide, the affordable housing for the full community list, wherever that one lives. For some of the challenges that are in the way, I wanted to add inclusionary zoning restrictions. Those can make it difficult for larger-scale projects to happen. There's evidence, when Portland implemented an inclusionary zoning law, basically cratered their market rate housing. So that's something that we're gonna need to consider. And then I really also appreciate you pointing out the daytime-nighttime populations and that there's folks who wanna live here. When we had our joint meeting with the Albemarle County Board of Supervisors, someone said, you know, "UVA provides all these jobs, and there's, you know, 20,000 people a day who commute into Charlottesville. Isn't that great?" And I was like, "Not great." That is 20,000 cars, or parking spaces, or things that we are trading off for a better and different, more efficient land use policy. And if you're commuting to Poyntonsboro, that's time you're not spending with your family, or doing your hobby, or whatever. So the, the population growth without proportional housing supply expansion, I mean, that's kind of why, as you mentioned earlier, we're not actually seeing a ton of growth in our population, because we, prices are going up because we haven't built more. So just thank you for highlighting that. And then that becomes a, increasing supply becomes part of a transportation solution as well. And so that's where it all ties together.
Thank you. All right, let's work. So on your, in front of you, you have a different stack of cards. If you can grab those. What I'd like you to do is write "housing" inside that center column. And what I'd like you to do is, we're gonna basically use this to kind of evaluate some of the things you've heard and draw some deeper clarity. So I'm gonna ask you, you can take a moment. And from everything you just heard regarding housing, from where it is and what's in the way, what could be in the way, what's a tension? What's a trade-off? And then out of those two, when you look at those together, what could be an opportunity? I think you might have mentioned one opportunity to add in particular, you know? I think you might have mentioned one opportunity to add, a particular, you know, area. So, from what you've heard with housing, where it is, what's in the way, what could be in the way, as you reflect high level, what's a tension you heard? What's a trade-off that you heard? And then what could be an opportunity that arises out of those two? And if you took notes, you'll feel like review your notes as well, and see if you can extract anything out of those. an opportunity that you think could emerge?
It's harder, you're getting closer.
Yeah, yeah. A little more, a little more specific now. And it could be one, you know, one tension that may have jumped out to you, one big trade-off that jumped out to you as well. And then when you look at those two next to each other, what's the opportunity that you believe could emerge? And keep in mind also, just, I'm kind of going to go back to this, when you start to think of opportunity, don't think of strategy, don't think of execution, don't think the way of, remember that when I ask you to think of something, it's to inform and direct. Okay? So it's almost you being able to like, I think an opportunity might just be that way. Like, you know, we're not even on the journey yet, but you're just pointing that way. That's information and directing. All right, about another minute.
Yes, yes.
Let's talk about it. What is a, regarding housing, you've heard where it is and what's in the way, what could be in the way? A lot of information you've taken in. What is a, walk us through it, what's a tension, what's a trade-off, and then out of those, what's an opportunity that jumped out?
Yeah, so, attention, I would say is cost, is the restrictions that, you know, we talked about maybe with the regulations that we might have. And another tension is gentrification, and this is particularly in the community of color, the African-American community here, that feel like that they have been overly lead with the new programs and things, particularly with the new residents here where, because maybe African-Americans may have had bad credit because maybe they had a medical issue when they worked at UVA, I mean, and they went to UVA and had bad credit. But anyway, it's real tension in the community of color. And, you know, I am stuck on a trade-off.
So then it's happening, and maybe a choice of, when you heard the housing and the choice of the decision, is there anything that you think has been prioritized over?
I'm going to need to come back to that, but I do have opportunities, and my opportunities like more housing, and I have more diverse, more diverse in the sense of the type of housing that we have, but also in the, that different types of housing makes our schools in our community more diverse, which I think just makes us a better and a stronger community. And so I need to come back to the trade-off. That had me stumped, so.
Okay, no, it's all good. And that trade-off is around, I'm hearing this is happening, and because of that's happening, this is not happening, right?
Yeah.
After you, sir, what tension, trade-off, and opportunity did you hear?
Yeah, I hit on this earlier, and this is a really small part of the whole overall topic of housing, but I do think it's important. People feeling quote "safe" in their neighborhoods unquote, with the fact that we need to put a homeless shelter somewhere.
It's a tension?
A tension.
Okay.
Trade-off, yeah, I'll repeat everything I wrote here, but I think it's a trade-off to some degree about who in the city we're going to quote "put out," whether it's the people in the downtown mall, or if it's the people wherever.
Yeah.
I think that that's real. I think the opportunity, and maybe this is Pollyanna-ish, Pollyanna-ish, is that it's an opportunity for the community to genuinely come together, you know? Maybe we split up these units, maybe we go with something smaller, this is getting into strategy, but maybe there are ways to address the need such that one part of the community doesn't feel completely put upon.
And I want you to know that, thank you for that. Not strategy, those are great, high-level thoughts of like, here, I want you later to go explore these, those are great ideas, thank you, thank you, thank you. Lloyd, tension, a trade-off, and an opportunity that you heard and experienced while hearing about the update of housing?
Well, I sort of chickened out on the tension.
Don't do that to me, Lloyd, no, no, no. I know it's after lunch, don't do that.
Well, I said it was everything. The fundamental principle of economics is there's no such thing as a free lunch.
Sure.
And when people come before us and say, well, this decision is a no-brainer.
Yeah.
That just infuriates me because it wouldn't be in front of us if it was truly a no-brainer. So I got off sidetracked by that rant, but anyway.
But I'm also hearing you say that the fact that this is a priority alone is just a tension.
Yeah. I mean, we've got all kinds of things that we have declared to be high priorities, and we've declared three different high priorities that we're discussing right now, and unless something very dramatic happens, we won't be able to fund them all.
Sure.
Anyway, so, but in terms of a trade-off that we heard about just today, is this question of the stormwater issue versus housing costs? And maybe one of the opportunities is that we find a way to simplify our regulatory framework as a government stormwater pension.
Yeah, no, thank you, thank you for that, absolutely. Tension that you've heard in the update of housing, a trade-off you've heard, and then opportunity that may emerge?
Yeah, I mean, the tension is between change in the status quo. I mean, there's NIMBY attitudes, and that's not just towards homelessness services, but to change in general. I mean, we've got the lawsuit, we've got people who are afraid of height, we've got people who are afraid of a lot of different things. And a lot of those problems are solved by more housing, so there's that kind of need to resolve that tension. My trade-off was a little different than what people have said so far, which is having the political will to do something which may be useful but unpopular for a section of constituents, so trade-off on kind of the support that we have maybe is how to frame that within a trade-off mindset.
That's really, I can see that, yeah.
Yeah, spending money, and then just generally like spending money on this versus other things is the obvious trade-off. There's always going to be an opportunity cost to everything that we do. And then my opportunity that I'm suggesting is allowing and encouraging private investment, which doesn't cost the city much or anything at the outset, and then we gain real estate taxes and against solar transportation benefits in the end.
Great. Tension that you heard in the updated housing, a trade-off you heard, and then opportunity that may emerge?
The tension, there are a lot of tensions though.
Yeah, yeah.
The one I wrote down is just that housing is very complex, and it's very hyper-local in terms of assessing the impact as well as what can happen. So what came to mind, and I think some of these, for example, a seven-story apartment building with, you know, $3,000 a month rents, that impact looks very different on a piece of vacant land or in JPA versus, we heard about Hearthwood losing 200 affordable units. That development happening there has a very different impact than in JPA or on a vacant piece of land. So how do we engage with the nuance of that, even though like, it's accomplishing a necessary goal of market rate supply? What does it look like if we encourage displacement of a mobile home park? Like, does that benefit distribute to that income level? And just, yeah, how do we engage with the complexity? Trade-offs, money, it's extremely expensive, hundreds of thousands of dollars for zero to 30% AMI units. I think it's $100,000 in subsidy just to go from 60% AMI to 30% AMI to make the project financially feasible. I think for a project to break even on the rent side, just land construction costs, you break even at around 70% AMI. And obviously developers to get financing are going to need a profit not to break even. So, if we want to reach those deep AMI levels, there's no way around spending a lot of money, and that would compete against other budget priorities as construction costs go up. Another trade-off is just, how do you, how do we evaluate the trade-off of something like allowing a community benefits agreement, like in Cherry Avenue, where you can get to a lot of things that neighborhood cares about, but that necessarily will involve a discretionary decision point, and we can't have that everywhere in the city, but where is it warranted? Where do we want a community benefits agreement that is getting to, addressing, for example, the legacy of Vinegar Hill? What would that look like? I don't know. And then, opportunities, I think there's a huge opportunity for us to really engage with a lot more of the complexity as we, we were so consumed by the zoning conversation, maybe we will again, the lawsuit. But I was excited by revisiting the code because I think that's an opportunity to really get into the weeds on like some of these trade-offs. I think there's also opportunities to study the impact of our investments and figure out, is a land trust model more effective than some of what we've been doing? Is CRA more effective than PHA, or what's the ROI of our different strategies?
Yeah. But these are fast, this is amazing, I love this. One, I want to thank you for sitting in the tensions, trade-offs, and opportunities, and us not going into like, let's do this thing yet. So I appreciate that, and we're going to tap into your writings a little later, so you're building your own toolbox, so thank you for that. I want you to take a break. So take a 10-minute break, stretch, get warm. And again, thank you for the cooling, by the way, I'm keeping it cool, if not, this will all come down, you will all fall. So I appreciate that. Thank you so much for sitting in that exercise. I know it's not easy to sit in tensions and trade-offs and tons of complexities, but I admire your first, I do like you after Super Bowl. So, all right, 10, 10 minutes, and we'll see you back. So we've been talking about the top strategic priorities, we're wanting to give you a deeper understanding on them. You're going to hear the next one, which is around education. And again, Jake's going to kind of present where it is, Ashley's going to come behind and talk about what is in the way, or what could be in the way regarding strategic priority of education. And listen for, again, listen for the tensions, listen for the trade-offs, listen for the opportunities, and definitely take here to those impact areas, because we're going to talk about them a little more tomorrow. Cool? All right, and then none of that, tea, coffee, you know what we do, I need you, I need you. But no, Jake, just take it away, after you, sir.
So, right off the bat, education, there's been a lot of slides in the chat. Education, we said Charlottesville supports a broad and well-integrated set of educational opportunities, including Charlottesville City Schools, other youth-serving organizations, career technical education providers, and U-Mark Virginia 3D College. But we're going to be focusing in really this conversation on CCS. And just diving right in with the numbers, diving right in with the impact that it is, just focusing in on each of these financial operations and listening to Bian's conversation, Bian's presentation, I guess she and I were averaging different dollars because I think her dollar figure was higher, but we'll call it over this five-year period, an average increase of approximately $5 million per year in new money. I think in a shorter span of time, I think Bian managed to say 8.4, going back to her presentation, because the message is the same, whatever dollar figure you put in there, is an increasing spend per year in new money for operating our facilities. And then on the facility development and construction, don't have to cast back as far this time, but since our most recent presentation, she all, well, I'm first kind of looking backwards, we, in this space, in recent years, we funded the acquisition of K-Tech, it was over $5 million. Charlottesville Little School, we just had fantastic ribbon cutting on an amazing building, putting out, the cost of that building is $91 million. And we have as our next ribbon cutting to look forward to, the Walker Pre-K School, anticipated now at $42 million. Remember that was previously around 30, I think what we have set aside for that is 30, but that was mentioned during that last presentation. That cost is, now is at around $42 million. As we highlighted in that presentation the other day, the overall condition of our school facilities is good, right? We have done a really amazing job over the last probably decade to two decades in really upping the standards of our maintenance of these buildings, but they are old buildings fundamentally. As Dr. Gurley, I think, notably highlighted, the last, notably highlighted, yes, in his comments of the ribbon cutting the other day, the last ribbon cutting in Charlottesville was for Charlottesville High School in 1974 from a new school building. And then we have been spending annually on our modernization program, 1.4 million. Now, in the presentation we gave the other day, we talked about what I'm calling state of good repair investments. That's meeting the required capital maintenance, HVAC, roofs being big ticket items in there, addressing the bathrooms, hopefully in many cases upgrading up to the type of bathrooms we're now seeing in Charlottesville High School, Charlottesville Middle School. Addressing ceiling flooring, those are the places that where the wear and tear of these buildings is most apparent. Addressing and upgraded lighting, and we came at you with the cost of approximately $100 million for that. But you all recall where that conversation, I mean, they went to, which was that, that number represents, as I said, state of good repair, but if we're getting into the idea of modernization, if we're getting into the idea of, again, more similar to what we saw at Charlottesville Middle School yesterday, we're looking at larger numbers. So these are just estimates based on prior studies of the schools in terms of just the basic idea of increasing the square footage of each of these schools. Now, we're not looking at that from a school population, I think we made that clear, we don't see a school population need to emphasize these schools, but when we think about the additional space that's necessary for breakout rooms, for special, special, special needs type oriented classrooms, for meeting the needs for gym space, or cafeteria space, for meeting space, there is a sense that we need to be looking at expanding, or at least thinking about the idea of expanding the footprints of these schools. That number, when you look at the elementary schools, very, very rough estimates, can't estimate enough, I can't emphasize enough that these are rough estimates, but paying to that in the $132 million space, and the same thing when you play around Charlottesville High School, $176. All of this is anticipating that we're still using our existing schools and not actually replacing a school. But all of these are anticipating that we are making use of swing space in order to do a full-blown modernization of a school all at once.
Is this in addition to the $100 million of prior slide?
No, this would not be in addition, this is, this is two pathways, if you will. And then just as we, as we think about that facilities maintenance, Bian did a very good job of highlighting that there is a cost associated with ongoing maintenance of all of our assets. I think they are ready, as you pointed out, that the older assets sometimes cost us more to maintain over time. But some of the things that we're working on are where, the other places where city funds are going into our schools, we have contracts for buildings and grounds maintenance, we have people transportation, and increasingly, our Human Services Department is involved in youth program and in partnership with the schools. So a lot of different places where we are working in partnership, and of course, there's a cost associated with all of those. So, I am, but I'm going to go right.
You got a few minutes, yeah?
A few minutes.
And Phil, you can go back to any slide, ask any questions, specifically, point to anything.
And this was a lot about numbers and dollar figures in this.
If, if we did finally get authorization for the sales tax for school construction, is that ten million a year?
I think it's estimated that.
Fourteen.
Yeah, and it's about a hundred million dollars in bond capacity.
Okay. So, at present, costs would cover most, but not all, of the modernization.
By these estimates.
Right. I'm sure they'll go up.
And using the, using the allocation that has been described as the type of sales tax allocation that you could devote to that. But then there's the other tension of that you use some of that for something else, like transportation. Because they're both in the same space.
Any questions to absorb information, understanding?
If we in fact got that extra cent, and let's say we were getting fourteen million from that, is there anything we're presently spending that we would not then have to spend?
I think that's a, that's a very good question. I think we would look at, without having somebody from our facilities development and maintenance team here next to me, but what I think we would look at in that space is, we have major investments planned for HVAC and roofs in particular. One of the things we might be able to trade off is, if the timing is right, we don't do a roof replacement because we're in ready to do a full-scale renovation of the school and all of that at the same time. So those are out there. We might stop doing the one point four million dollars every year on kind of surgical inserted modernization projects and instead just go straight to this, this approach instead. So yeah, there's some dollars in that space.
Of the ninety-one million for Charlottesville Middle, some of that was grant-funded, right?
Seventeen.
Seventeen? I just don't remember what that was. Thank you.
So, sorry, Michael. I know that, I'm just recalling my time on the school board when I was on the other side, that some of the questions, comments that we had as a school board member was like, you know, and Sam talked about this, is, you know, the, you know, that a lot of these things, they had not been done before. So we kind of paying for not doing some of the things maybe we should have been done during all along. And where does Charlottesville kind of rank, or not necessarily rank, fall within as far as this type of commitment to other localities?
How do we compare in terms of, you know, what I keep going to is the timeframe that's gone by without a major investment in the schools. The last major investment, I believe in Charlottesville, was the performing art center of the high school in nineteen eighty-three. And then before that, the last major investment was building the high school in seventy-four. Is it that, the length of time without deep investment in a school building, is that what you're looking for?
Well, no, I think that what we were looking at, and I'm trying to put myself on the school board, six or seven years ago, is like, where does Charlottesville rank as far as like its financial commitment to the school district? Like, I'm just gonna say Manassas, because I'm Manassas City. They say that, I think that, you know, we're gonna give them ten percent. I'm just throwing out a figure or something like that. So, of course, I don't need to know it now, but as we move forward and have these, probably what I'm hearing within the next five years, have these conversations with the schools and the profits in the community that we're gonna have to, what's that, what she said, prioritization and?
Conservation.
Conservation. Yes.
Any other questions?
Obviously, this was all focused on buildings. Is it known future costs of the people of like new instruction tutors, as well as collective bargaining?
We don't know the specific cost at this point in time. We don't know the specific cost at this point.
No, but tomorrow, you're gonna talk about that exact part of the scenario, because you're headed into what's coming up. Because that's a, that's a financial operational line item that we have as the tension trade-off discussion.
I feel like they're setting this up, man.
No, I, I, no, the amount of times, write that down! Write that down!
No, sir.
Thank you for writing that down! Remember this! Alright, we're gonna hear what's in the way and what could be in the way. Our education goal, strategic part. Cool? After you, man.
Me again. So, for education, when we start thinking again in that impact area of what's in the way and what could be in the way for financial operations, we know that there is significant capital that is competing for limited CIP investments. As I like to remind staff, as well as members of the community, the city has five apples. How we cut up those apples are decision points, but we have five of them, and that is all we have. I cannot conjure a magical apple for you, any, any one of us. There are deferred funding for critical projects that we have all just talked about, as well as there's that impact of the result of that flexible nature of the school funding formula process. So we know we have a dollar amount theoretically, because we say we're gonna give X amount to the schools. But then there is that additional amount that we give. And you all flipped in your Bian packet. She gave a very nice chart to show how that growth is changing as well. So keep that chart in your mind when I'm talking about what's in the way with that kind of growth. Because again, you all have five apples, so any additional part of apples you give to one place, can't give to another. Pen, tension, trade-off. What could be in the way? We know that there's gonna be rising construction and maintenance costs that can exceed projections. Unfortunately, as much as we would love to say that we in-house produce all of the widgets, nuts and bolts that we will need to do all of this work, we don't. So we are at the whims of the market like everyone else. We know that there is a possibility that if we hit that economic downturn, we're gonna, we might have to see a reduced bond capacity or a reduced revenue. All of that is something that can come down the pipe. As well as we know that there's gonna be some changes that probably will come within state and federal funding allocations to the school system as a whole. Maybe perhaps mentioning a little bit of what Councilmember Payne was just saying. If there are less dollars that are invested for the general operations of the schools, the education, the tutors, English as a second language supports, supports for those with neurodiversity and other learning disabilities, are we going to be asked to step into that space? And then, again, your five apples. Again, those social determinants of health. School funding stability can ensure equitable learning environments that promote long-term health and economic opportunity. For example, I hope everyone here had either, has a lovely realization right now or has already had one. Our littles, by the time they hit third grade, you stop learning to read and you read to learn. So if you have not gotten a quality education from early learner through second grade, in third grade, we stop teaching you how to read. We expect that you know how to read, and that is how you will learn for the rest of your time in any educational process. So all of this matters with that economic opportunity, because those youth that hit that moment of third grade and do not know how to read proficiently have just limited their income or any capacity.
I think that also includes people at any age, if their families have the resources to choose a different school and they choose the public schools, that adds to kind of everybody's educational experience.
Yes, absolutely.
And that diversity of.
Correct. Having that diversity within a classroom, getting those thoughts out as people raise their hand, always is gonna be really great, whether you are a little learning or an adult learning. So we think about facility development and construction. What is in the way? We have limited project management capacity during large-scale projects. So for example, when you're doing a large-scale modernization, like Charlottesville Middle School, that is taking some of our project management team off the deck for any other projects you all may want to see, whether they're within a school or within another facility. We also have some coordinating challenges between wants and needs. So if we start thinking about, when we're thinking of facility development and construction, what is a need for a building or a facility, whether it's an upgrade or redo or full new build? And what is something that's just really lovely to add, right? And then what could be in the way? Project sequencing delays can affect modernization timelines. So choosing to do X may mean we cannot do Y and vice versa. We're thinking of that market volatility impacting that material availability and pricing. Again, love to say we would make all our widgets, but we don't. We've got some changes in accessibility of supportive funds for development and constructions with green lenses. Before, we could look at some of the work that had been done under some of the Inflation Act work with Biden administration and say, well, maybe we can add this thing, because we can apply for this funding. That does not really exist anymore. And also reconciling the desire for modern amenities and facilities that can be limited by physical plant and cost allocation. So as we've talked about a lot, we have older buildings. Even if we can modernize them, there may be limits to what we can do within that actual physical plant structure. Thinking of our social determinants of health again, we know that modern and safe facilities can enhance student engagement, reduce absenteeism, and support mental well-being. We have a school that has no windows. Windows are amazing, because humans are complicated houseplants. We need sunlight and water, university. And then we've got our impact area for facilities maintenance. So already in the way, as we've talked about, we've got that aging infrastructure, which leads to increased maintenance backlog. And we have some coordination challenges between Charlottesville City School and City Facilities slash Public Works and Parks and Recreation, because those teams are providing the assistance for facilities and maintenance, not just for our school system, but for every city-owned building and in the case of parks, every piece of parkland and trail you see. So if they're mowing a lawn for a school, they're not mowing a lawn in a park. So, never mind. What could be in the way? We've got that, of course, deferred maintenance that is accelerating our asset deterioration. Even though we have some of that maintenance in your CIP right now that's planned, anything can happen with a roof. And if a roof is not set to go until twenty twenty-eight and something happens to it in twenty twenty-six, where do we go from there? And then we've got competition for resources with new construction priorities. Again, if we're thinking about that facilities maintenance, but we decide we want a new basketball court and just picking out something, then we have to make that decision that we're gonna dedicate and allocate the space, time, talent, and materials to the basketball court, and maybe not to what was planned. When we think of our social determinants of health again, we know that those well-maintained facilities can protect students and staff's health. They can reduce injury risks and ensure equitable access to learning spaces. And as a point of privilege, when we think about reducing injury risk, I want to give you all an actual visual picture. Our juvenile detention center, its largest area that calls the most medical calls is their gymnasium. Because as the youth would play, it used to be a concrete floor. And can you imagine getting checked in basketball to a concrete floor? So that was where, if you looked at their line items, the most money they were spending on medical. Recently, through all the jurisdictions, we were able to replace that floor with a bountable rubber floor that will reduce those injuries. So not only are we protecting the health of those students, of those youth that are learning and growing there for the time they're there, but we also are reducing that injury risk. So that's just a visible example, if you all ever want to go see the new gym floor. I know that Mr. Roland would be happy to show you all, but just wanted to give you a visual for that social determinant of health.
Cool. Bian, Ashley for Q and A. Dive in, ask some questions, gain some understanding.
So I did have a comment, you know.
See, I answered a question and you answered.
First thing I'm saying, well, it's actually a question, so.
It's a question now! It's a question now!
Just pose it as a question.
Just look to the voice at the end.
So, but you mentioned the, you know, maybe the economy downturn. But a lot of times, that's an opportunity to, you know, construction companies are like, looking for work, even to keep the workers, you know, employed and the machines going. And they, a lot of times, they, you know, I hear they just want to do it at cost. Just, you know, maybe make a little. So it's, and I know we have to, or localities have to be in a position to do projects at that time. So, you know, I don't know, just, it could be a time that maybe instead of twenty million, they may, we may get it for fifteen or whatever, but.
See how you added that, man? You can't make your question.
I did.
See how you did this?
I did, I did, but I will help out. You're correct, but remember that we did have that presentation from Bian where she kept enforcing that we're in those unprecedented times. So even if right now we have it where the construction costs and maybe the labor for construction may go down, that doesn't mean that the materials that perhaps have to come from someone else are gonna go down. Because even if those places might want to reduce their costs, there are, there are now an additional cost that they cannot mitigate. So we may have less costs here, but more costs somewhere else. Again, just rounding back to Bian's presentation.
Any other questions around what's in the way or what could be in the way regarding education and some of these impact areas?
What is a school?
I appreciate the questions.
Isn't that man some coffee?
It's your question, yes, a little authentic.
It is, we're at a moment of, is this a pipe? I get it. Schools can be lots of things. But yeah, and one of the things we're talking about is even, it's on this green space. We know green space is a part of our schools. It is a learning part. We have had learning gardens, all of those things that take facilities maintenance. See what I did there?
Let's dive in, let's go ahead. And you all have another card in front of you, please grab that. Do me a favor and write "education" on the inside of that. And James kind of gave you some insights a little bit about where it is, and Ashley gave a little bit of insights around what's in the way and potentially what could be in the way. Write what you heard there. What tensions did you hear? What trade-offs did you hear? And what opportunity could emerge?
I need to see if it is actually tested.
Feel free, it is. It is.
Alright, about another minute. Juan, Diego, will you start us off, kick us off?
Yes, yes, so.
Alright, so running education?
Yes.
What is the tension you heard and the trade-offs that you heard in those two? What's an opportunity that could emerge?
Yeah, so the tensions, I have rising costs and just the school needs, both on the kind of academic and the capital side. The trade-off is, you know, delayed construction, which will rise, I mean, increase the cost. And the opportunities I have is for, you know, is for high-performing, well-attended schools.
Yeah, I had this tension, the investment slash reinvestment in our capital stock versus spending money on operational and programmatic needs. The trade-off is, is it better to have a modern facility or an older one that's? Trade-off is, is it better to have a modern facility or an older one that's yet to have better teaching?
Oh, I'm sorry, opportunity, I apologize, yeah, opportunity, yeah.
The opportunity is, this is kind of.
Were you about to show the way your hand right against?
No, the opportunity is basically for the community to have conversations about this. I think, as the thing I mentioned earlier, there's a lot of cognitive dissonance.
I think, I think, I might be biased in that sense, but I am naturally, I think, facilitating conversations. To be able to do the deep work is really important, especially as the tensions and trade-offs and things, right? Lloyd, after you, sir.
Well, I, I tend to conflate the tensions and trade-offs. Because, and in this particular instance, I start from the proposition that we're going to do 15 to 20 million dollars in renovations to schools. And the tension and the trade-offs become what we sacrifice to make that happen. And.
You see anything regarding attention, is there anything, two things you can think of that just pull against each other regarding that?
You know, what Brian was saying about, maybe we don't increase the capital investment. We spend more on better teachers or something. I don't really see that as a viable trade-off. I think the school buildings are what they are and maybe we don't need. Frankly, when I took the tour of Charleston Middle School yesterday, I sort of had the feeling that I wondered whether they could have done 10 million dollars less. I don't know what the costs actually are, actually were. It was mighty nice. But could it have been done a little bit cheaper? But that's not something I've, I've heard here today. And then, so that's sort of my both tension and trade-off. And the opportunity is, I really think this is going to give us great opportunities for some really amazing schools for our kids.
And the pool is, it's, there's no, and that's the idea, there's no like end goal to the pool. It's just two things pulling against each other. And the trade-off is something that I hear is being done and something's not being right, you know, as well. But the two things that are competing or pulling. And the trade-off, something that's existing though, because that's happening, something's not happening. After you, man.
So, I mean, there's the obvious tensions of constrained resources, people, capital, and materials. The trade-offs are order of operations, prioritization of projects, and, you know, the opportunity costs. If we're spending it on Jackson Vida, well, then Trailblazer is getting deferred or whatever. But, you know, that's something that will work out as needs arise or, you know, as we do triage physically. And then the opportunities, you know, this was something that was missed with a huge project that was just done at Charlottesville Middle. But if we're going to do some huge projects at some elementary and high school down the way, I mentioned this the other day. If we allow for greater density by letting some private developer put homes on top of the schools at the same time as we're doing a large-scale construction project, that can help to free costs and provide workforce housing and housing in general. So I think that's something that shouldn't be off the table.
After you, sir.
Like others, people versus buildings as a tension. Another tension is school board and city council. I don't say this as a negative thing, but school board doesn't control any revenue sources and doesn't have to make financial decisions. So their incentive is to always advocate for as much spending as possible, which, again, is their role. But how do we set expectations for what we are able to do? Is there a way to reach there?
If you could sum that, I mean, that's great, that's very insightful. If you could sum that up, it's the tension between the advocacy of the school and the responsibility of the council? Is that what kind of hearing or?
Yeah, I think so. Trade-offs, again, buildings versus staff. I don't know if it's a trade-off, but enrollment. It's possible increases. It's been flat for 20 years. It's also possible it doesn't. What's going to happen there? Maybe it increases enrollment. Who knows? I don't know. I think there's uncertainty there. Obviously, it runs up against any other budget priorities. Opportunities, I think in Arlington, there's an elementary school with a planetarium, so we could do that. But I think the state sales tax is a big opportunity, as is, I think, kind of reaching maybe a new funding agreement with the schools that's setting out what the expectation is and kind of laying it out clearer than it is now. Because I don't think there's an alignment of expectations currently.
No, super helpful, thank you. Those are, I mean, very reflective thoughts and insights, I appreciate it. We'll give you a break, and then when you come back, when you hear that third priority, then we'll just ask about it.
All y'all are rapping up your cuss words. Talk about cuss words. We are going to talk about transportation. The strategic priority areas, Charleston provides a regional transportation system that increases mobility options and reliable and affordable for all. For the purposes, today, we're going to focus it on transit specifically. And your caller would say, for the strategic opportunity, we had a goal that spoke to restoring transit service to its pre-COVID service levels. So back in July, we had work sessions. We dug into both the state of our transit service today, what improvements we've made, and some scenarios looking towards the future. This is a reminder of the transportation system status, description of our 12 routes and the trolley, and service that we offer. I'm not going to read all of this, but it's there in case we need to reference back to it. The changes that we've made in FY '25. Route 11 is extended to the center of the elevator, something that we've been working towards for a while. Routes 4 and 9 were improved to 30-minute frequency between 6:00 AM and 7:00 PM on weekdays. Route 6 improved to 30 minutes between 6:00 AM and 6:00 PM weekdays and Saturday. And then we've added this recovery time to every route. Because this is getting to more and more core issues on transit, which is not just frequency, but reliability, right? This buffer time ensures that our buses are able to fit to their schedule and reliably be there when somebody wants to be picked up and taken to their destination. Not going to read every bit of this slide, but just noting, if we go back to FY 2018, we're close to 2 million riders. We are now at about 1.4. So we saw obviously a significant drop off for COVID, and then we've been steadily increasing since then. I love these charts. I think this really captures a lot in one picture. For COVID frequencies, all I'm going to highlight on this is that we have weekday, Saturday, and Sunday service pre-COVID. That number of our routes went to 11, some of them even went to midnight. Those of you having the main things to highlight, the trolley was the primary route that was running at a 15-minute service. But we have, you see, there's some red in here. Those are the services that are coming in at an hour or more. Just for refresher sake, the blue is under 30-minute service. The green is your 30-minute service. Your yellow is your 60-minute service, and the red is anything over 60 minutes. So obviously, getting rid of the red has been a major goal. Really getting us to the point where the only colors that show up on here are the blue and green, which conveniently enough are CAT's colors.
You said blue was what, sorry?
Blue is under 30 minutes.
I was crunching on a pencil and I heard 130 minutes. Under 30 is better.
Under 30 is better.
Thank you.
Sort of hearing 130 now also, like as you said.
So, yeah, getting us down to blues and greens, right? Because those are CAT's load of colors.
All right.
I thought there was some significance to the color. Current frequency is at 66 operators. See, we've gone to green and yellow, so we are on our way. But we still do Sunday service and much fewer, fewer of our lines extend to 11:00 PM. So then we talked with y'all a lot about some different scenarios. What it could look like to reach some of these policy objectives that we've been talking about. We talked about 82-driver scenario and that costing about 17 million dollars. That's the all-in cost. So I'm not taking out at this point any federal, state, or county funding, funding that is just straight up all-in cost, 17 million. To get up to 108 drivers, 108 is significant because that's returning us to Sunday service, 22 and a half million.
Quick question?
Yep.
Is that additional or inclusive of what we are already paying?
This is what would be inclusive of what we're already paying. This is the all-in cost to provide that service with that many.
And what are we probably paying? About 12 million or something?
Yes. So then we have the service expansion models. What I'm going to do is each one of these prioritizes a different combination of policy objectives. Sunday service, frequency of service, particularly this 15-minute ride, and extending service into the 11 o'clock or 12:00 range. So each one of those kind of playing with those policy objectives scenario, one is the one that maximizes all of achieving those policy objectives. And so when you achieve all of those policy objectives, four routes of 15 minutes, all lines extending to a minimum of 11:00 PM. And Sunday service, that gets you to kind of your highest dollar figure, about your 28 or 20 million. So when we think about our impact areas, so this is coming back to the impact areas that we're going to be talking about again. Reliable service access. Some of them, actually, this was also an impact, reliable service access, sorry. So those are the scenarios. But to get to those scenarios, the other thing we have to think about is our facility expansion. So right now, we have some conceptual plans that are looking at what kind of expansion we would need to do to meet the multitude of objectives we've identified for our transit service. This adds it all up, but it's 97 million all-in. Yet that is not incorporating what would be federal cost share of this, of that total. And then, again, in the space of reliable service access, the cost of the buses, the rolling stock. So we know diesel vehicles cost, come in at around 560,000. The electric come in at 1.2 million, hydrogen, 1.5. So if we take those system, those scenarios that we were looking at previously, the 82-drivers scenario, six more vehicles, those are your costs as you go down by the different bus types to get the six additional vehicles into the system. The 108-driver scenario, 15 more vehicles, and those costs down the line. I apologize if those aren't lining up. And then the service expansion scenarios that we talked about before, depending on the scenario, it's 14 or 20 more vehicles. These numbers reflect the 20 more vehicles option. Just to give you a kind of a different scales of what those costs look like. Again, this is total cost, not inclusive of backing out state or federal cost share. So the other impact area we think about on our transit service is the climate, climate impact reductions. We have the zero-emission transition plan, which calls for ending the purchase of DSO vehicles in 2027. Transition the fleet entirely over to zero emission by 2040. This, of course, requires full purchase of buses and the entirety of that previous facility upgrade in order to achieve these. So if I go back to the facility upgrade, you can clearly identify the portions of this cost that are solely about meeting those private objectives. But then there's additional costs built in to particularly the maintenance facility, which, for example, in order to be hydrogen bus-ready, would have to have some retrofits associated with capturing, escaping hydrogen gas. The number of numbers are up to or, and that issue as being part of their facility cost. And then lastly, in the impact areas, we think about regional system creation. Our objective to see a regionally responsive transit system. And we've made significant progress in that space with the establishment of CARDA in the last year. We are working right now on a regional priorities plan to help us set up for the next big question, which is the need to identify a revenue source to fund that new regional system. So, any questions on this? I understand this was a very high-level look at our transit compared to the presentation you all received from Garland and his team. But trying to, it's not like the issues that we all have to talk about.
When, because I think it does directly connect to all of this. When will we reach an agreement on possible funding mechanism that we then would go to the General Assembly for CARDA?
Yeah, I asked that at the last CARDA meeting.
I was the one who missed.
Yeah. It won't be this year. I mean, they're still talking about, like, maybe Ben was the one speaking, Ben and Christine Jacobs. They're still seeing this not just baby steps, I won't say that, but maybe training wheels or something to get, basically, in their mind, a, we need to do some more work to be able to, before we can even go to Senator Deeds or Delegate Call Center, Delegate Offer, to say, this is what we want, or what we would like the General Assembly to do for us. I was like, why can't we just come up with a piece of paper and say, this is, you know? But I was told that that was, you know, some of the words naive or unrealistic.
They presented a chart with like, this is what other groups have done, this is their funding sources, these are some models we're looking at. So the research is underway.
But it's.
Research and conversations. Let me just jump in and say, there is both the research happening, but also conversations happening between the city and the county to see what level of agreement we can get to, to bring back to our respective board and council for that conversation.
To me, that, a lot of that was hashed out during the governance study. And.
It was sort of talked about, but wasn't decided.
I guess fair enough. To me, it's the sort of thing you could get the people in room, let's talk about what are our options.
No, over the, there is continuing conversations, but to just randomly answer the question, I don't know.
It won't be this year. At least this year. It seems to me overly complicated, but I'm not a professional in this line of work. But it seems to me that you could get the boards of supervisors and city councilors, the relevant professionals, have a joint meeting and say, we did all this governance work, what is the will of the group? And then move on.
Ongoing conversations about both revenue sources, but also whether we just are making a straight-up ask for funding this year. All I can offer at this point confidently is that we are not letting go of the issue that there is additional revenue potentially necessary if we're going to pursue expansion of service. And we are having those conversations with the county. And I hope that they will bring something to both the council and the board.
I'm confident it will happen, but I'm thinking it's going to be a couple of years.
But we are trying to have those conversations to the light towards as quickly as we can.
And hopefully with a more receptive state government and governor. I have a question. We got the presentation from Garland that had the menu options, and I think we all had some questions about, are those all of the menu options, or are we being kind of given an edited version of what's possible? So I just kind of want to bring that up again, which is, you know, the FTA has standards for equity, but equity is different than equality. And so the priority that we are hearing and have been hearing from the community for years at this point is 15 minutes on the five and seven, if you want to toss a six in there, that's fine too. And how we could theoretically state the case for the FTA of, okay, we're doing 60 minutes as equitable as equal service. FTA of, okay, we're doing sixty minutes as equitable as equal service, and now we're going to find some activity with increasing service times, or decreasing service times, increasing frequency on these three lines. And that's not a menu option that we've gotten, and I just want to kind of emphasize again, we would like to maybe see that.
Yep, and so I haven't looked at it yet, but my understanding is we got this week, that additional scenario. But I think to the point of kind of our conversations today, we are not digging that deep at this point in time. And I think really at this point, we're at the point, thinking about those bookends, right, where we started. What's the, what's the pleasure of council? What's the direction? And we can build those scenarios based on where we hear the priorities are.
Is this the time, or maybe this is a chart exercise, to also discuss? Because at some point, we're going to need to reevaluate our interest in making a massive fuel shift investment when our federal funding is not going to be the way it probably was, when we can get so much more frequency and number of buses for less money and all of that if we don't make that switch at this time. Why are you taking my section? Okay, I'll bring that up again in a couple of minutes. I got you. Thanks.
How much certainty or uncertainty is there over the federal funding and state funding for new buses? Is that something that's on the chopping block? Is it something that's probably not on the chopping block?
I feel that is also.
Your favorite harbinger doom is coming.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's cool. Ashley, what's in the way or could be in the way?
All right. So when we think about transit, we're going to talk again in our impact areas, and we're thinking about that reliable service access. So right now, we already know that in the way are operator mechanic and supervisor shortages that can limit frequency and reliability. We also know that there are underserved routes in high-needing neighborhoods. So those are what we already know are in the way. And what could be in the way is that threat of loss of federal transit funds. To piggyback a little bit off of what Councilmember Smoke was just asking, every city and community in the nation received a letter from the Secretary of Transportation that outlined some ways where you might possibly not get funding using the executive order focused in on diversity, equity, and inclusion. They're really broad. So there, it's a possibility that something that you do might trigger it, it's a possibility that it may not, it's a possibility that it's defensible, it's a possibility that it may not. That's what makes this what could be in the way instead of what is in the way, because we don't know. And we can't tell you when or if it will happen, and we can't tell you what they may end up maybe identifying in a community that they believe is a legal DEI worker, or maybe they don't identify something. So that's why I said it could.
Could I ask, does it seem that the potential loss of funding is related to possible DEI issues as opposed to DOGE issues, for example?
It appears from what I've seen, and I'm only going to speak on the document that I've seen, which is that Secretary of Transportation document, it was very much focused in on enacting the pleasure of the President through his executive order and aligning funding to that executive order.
Around DEI?
Correct, around DEI. Could there be more forthcoming because we have had so many executive orders? That is absolutely possible. But the one that I have right now that I think is the strongest visual tangible moment of you could lose funding is, for transit specifically, is in that Secretary of Transportation letter. We also know that what could be in the way is a fair free funding clip after fiscal year 2026 without identified replacement. Right now, this is grant funded, but we are out of the ability to apply for that grant. So it is not that we've lost the grant. As a matter of fact, we've kept the grant for quite some time. We just may not reapply for that funding source anymore.
Because we've done it so many years.
Correct, yes, yes, we are timed out.
We're maxed out.
It's not that we cannot, it's that we may not.
Yes.
Yeah.
We have continued staffing challenges that can delay service improvements potentially, and potential cost for additional system optimization plan and scenarios, and the timing of those improvements, right? That can all get in the way. When we think about our social determinants of health, we know that that reliable transit service, that reliable transportation access gets people jobs, gets people to healthcare, gets people to education, and it reduces inequities in mobility. When we think about those climate impact reductions, what is in the way is we do have some limited infrastructure to support fleet electrification, for example. We have an aging diesel fleet that is contributing to emissions. And we have a reduction in federal funding support for green infrastructure, which might have mitigated some cost of replacement, repair, for example. What could be in the way is that there are high electric bus maintenance costs and downtime risks, and there are requirements for the implementation of climate-focused transit alternatives. So the cost for those bus replacements, as James just showed you, there's cost for facilities, expansion, depending on what alternative fuel source is determined, and there are also other staffing costs. Do we need more mechanics? Do our mechanics have to go to school? Do we need more access to training, for example, and more supervisors? We think about the social determinants of health under this one, we do know that cleaner transit reduces respiratory illness rates, especially in communities adjacent to high traffic corridors, which most often are communities that identify as low income or are communities of color.
So looking at this, when you say high electric bus maintenance costs, is that possible? We don't know what there might be? Or we do know there are higher electric bus maintenance costs? I thought the whole idea of electric buses was there are fewer maintenance costs.
I think that what we, we need to keep in mind the data that we have. We do have data from other systems that do show that there are some electric bus maintenance issues. Those are what the buses that they have. Technology is always, always reinventing itself, innovating themselves. I'm a person that has an electric car that I know is a test. I am driving a test car. We're accurate, it's like, let's see if it works, right? You're never going to make that car again, by the way, I already know it. It's their test run. They're working out the bus. So we, what the evidence we have is that, yes, there are some transit systems that have experienced higher electric bus maintenance and then downtime, because if that bus goes down, you got to get a new bus. There's things, right? Could this, why it's in the, could be in the way, as buses evolve, technology changes, this may very well reduce. But right now, the evidence I have is to be able to tell you, this could be in the And then we've got our regional system creation. So again, we know that what is currently in the way is that CARDA is in its early stages, the governance and funding structures are still being built, and we need to continue to secure alignment between the city and the county stakeholders. What could be in the way is a slow rollout of regional service integration, and also there could be some political or funding disagreements with limited share and investment. When we think of those social determinants of health, again, that regional mobility can expand access to employment, to education, and to essential services across jurisdictional bounds. So we know that we do have individuals, again, go back to that image in your head, of daytime population and nighttime population. So we know that there are individuals that are coming into our community from other places that maybe might ride transit if it was available to them. Maybe perhaps we may have other opportunities for our own residents to go work in another locality in something that really matches their needs and helps them move up in economic mobility and opportunity if they can get there. Now, I have a point where you all can raise questions or statements in the form of questions.
Josh doesn't.
Where, where does UVA and their transit system fit into all this?
They are here, but not here. So my, our role was really to look at what we can tell you that you can control. I wish I could tell you, you could control that one. I can't.
The goal is to pull them into CARDA at some point.
To look at them as an opportunity. Perhaps on a contract basis.
But that would be in kind of the this, this part.
I think it's as slow as everything else is, but then particularly given the changes, waiting on that is not prudent. The biggest thing we can get from them is their ridership, right? But I would not wait.
One of the things that they have the opportunity to do that we don't, because they're not FTA funded, is buy whatever bus they want. All of our buses have to come from American abandoned structures. So they were able to buy smaller Turkish electric buses that can, that are really useful and adorable, and also can fit under the railway bridge and make, and extend their routes and services. If we were to access those as well, we could fully fund the purchase of them, but also we wouldn't be able to spend FTA dollars on the maintenance and mechanics needed to operate them. So.
It's like some tensions, some trade-offs.
It's like they get to do that, we don't. I think they would probably be loath to give that up if they became fully interested with our service.
Yeah, I just, I know when we visited Champaign-Urbana, their university incorporated and their ridership doubled, and it transformed their ability to do everything.
Same with Cornell.
They have the K-12 education too as part of Champaign-Urbana, so.
And I believe here, just as compared to, no one hate me, I am a Hokie in Whoville, but Blacksburg Transit is Blacksburg Transit. You get on that bus whether you are leaving Pritchard to try to go to class, or you are, you know, leaving a workplace trying to go somewhere.
And that's also funded, that's their payment in lieu of taxes for it, because the university funds their transit network.
Any questions for Ashley? Okay, let's work. You have one more card in front of you. Write down some tensions you may have heard, some trade-offs you may have heard. Together, what puts an opportunity, a burden, just from them. Right, write it down in a minute. Can I switch it up this time, or will you kick us off? Is that okay?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Tensions, I mean, obviously, the big one is funding. The Charlottesville, Almoral, UVA coordination relationship, I think, is a tension. I think there's tensions between different possible paths to increasing ridership or improving service. Trade-offs, obviously, it's expensive, so it competes against everything in the budget. As others mentioned, with the loss of Inflation Reduction Act and infrastructure law funding, is there a trade-off between zero emission bus plans and our practical ability to afford that if that, those funding opportunities are gone? Opportunities, I would agree with Brian that partnership with UVA is probably not going to happen soon, but it's still an opportunity. CARDA funding through the General Assembly, which I would also agree, like, we've seen the options, we just have to figure out how to choose. I think there's an opportunity to create a plan for our zero emission buses, because even if that funding's gone, is there a way for us to kind of keep that plan on hold if funding does come back, rather than saying, we're just going to totally abandon this? And I'll go a little off-script, but obviously, this is a big climate policy, so there's maybe an opportunity to have climate, like organizational excellence, suffuse all our priorities, especially climate resilience. And then, it's transportation-related, the downtown mall is an example of transportation infrastructure at pedestrian level. That went way beyond VDOT and was very intentional. What would it look like if we did that on Preston Avenue or the parking lot off the downtown mall or West Main? How can we think, as innovative as we did with the downtown mall again?
Oh, I got one. Thank you, ma'am.
All right. So the tension that I wrote down was responding to the demands of users versus capacity limitations, and also being aware of the accuracy of the FTA regulations. What, what, how are they being framed to us versus how are they actually requiring the implementation, making sure we're aware of that? My trade-off is kind of frequency and, and ability to easily get diesel buses versus green and wanting to be climate-friendly, but also acknowledging that at a certain point, enough people are out of their cars to make even a diesel bus climate-friendly, and having the patience to get to that tipping point. But also the amount that we need to have enough buses to get to that tipping point. And then opportunity that I noted was to install fifteen-minute service on five, six, seven, in the trolley first to boost ridership numbers, which then increases our funding that we can use to spend on the other routes. And then also, on kind of a larger, a little more expansive scale, is we're also simultaneously increasing our bike and pedestrian infrastructure. And if I can get across town in twelve minutes, I'm not going to wait fifteen minutes for a bus. And so if we see that kind of shift on a larger scale, how is that going to affect our bus routes and where the demand is? And so then, there's an opportunity to kind of tailor the bus routes on those with the highest need for buses, not just for getting around town. Because you need a bus in a different scenario than you need your bike. So how does that look if we get a big enough cultural shift there?
Yeah. Awesome, very good, thank you. Louis, tensions, trade-offs, I'm cheering.
So the first tension I noted is simply climate action versus the diesel bus cost advantage, how we're going to shake that out. In terms of trade-offs, that same trade-off, diesel versus hydrogen versus electric vehicles, but also the trade-off of, I don't think we could sustain with the voters both a tax increase, a sales tax increase for school construction, and some other dedicated funding tax for CARDA. It's going to turn out to be one or the other. And then finally, in terms of opportunities, I would look forward to trying to figure out what we can do to get UVA involved, and I would also like to figure out what the opportunities would be for outlying counties such as Green County and Louisa County that have a fair amount of, have a fair amount of traffic coming into Charlottesville for computer purposes. Every time I drive up Twenty-Nine North at eight-thirty in the morning, because I'm trying to get to the corner of Green County by nine, I see this torrent of vehicles coming south on Twenty-Nine, and I see all these new parking complexes going up on Twenty-Nine, and I'm thinking, where are these people working? How are they getting there? I see where they're, how they're getting there. They're on Twenty-Nine South stuck in.
In a private vehicle.
In a private vehicle, and that's an opportunity.
This reflects what others have said. I would pose attention as ridership versus environment. Maybe that's a false thing to, but just kind of on a bare, the bare face of it, do we focus on?
And then finally, in terms of opportunities, um, I would look forward to trying to figure out what we can do to get UVA involved. And I would also like to figure out, uh, what the opportunities would be for outlying counties such as Green County and Louisiana County that have a fair amount of, uh, have a fair amount of traffic coming into Charlottesville for computer purposes. Uh, every time I drive up 29 North at 8:30 in the morning because I'm trying to get to court of Green County by nine, I see this torrent of vehicles coming south on 29th. And I see all these new parking complexes going up on 29th. And I'm thinking, where are these people working? How are they getting there? I see where they're, how they're getting there. They're on 29 South stuck in.
In a private vehicle.
In a private vehicle. And, and that's an opportunity.
This reflects what others have said. I would pose attention as ridership versus environment. Maybe that's a false thing to, which is kind of on a bare, the bare face of it. Focus on having more riders pulling people off the road, uh, on buses versus making frankly massive investments in exquisite technology that is the greenest. Trade-offs, maybe there's no trade-off in environment. If someone does the analysis to say that we pull off this many riders off the road at an average trip length of ever how many miles with this much CO2, if someone did that calculation compared to what would be removed from, you know, the buses being on hydrogen versus diesel, someone, consultant, probably Miss Riverball could do it, can tell us that. And that would be a piece of information that would, I think, make it very clear which one to prioritize.
And that, that has been done, and I think it was roughly triple ridership from our historic high. So you need to triple from our historic high.
I'd be interested, okay?
Yeah.
Fair enough.
To get to what?
Break even on the emissions when you look at the number of riders you need in a bus to compare with a car. Of tall order.
Okay, so that has been done. The rest of my card is not relevant.
Yeah, yeah, um, yeah, I like to, I'm on this kind of the same lines. I like to see those numbers. My, my tensions are, you know, the, the cost increase for the increase in frequency, um, the cost for battery electric buses and hydrogen buses. Um, the trade-off I see is, um, diesel, you know, that have more diesel buses, and have more frequency than the high cost of the, um, battery electric and hydrogen. And that more frequency in the high-use routes. I think Natalie mentioned those, that I think that, you know, no matter what, how the bus is running, that, you know, we know the routes that are high-frequency. You know, make it every five minutes if we know people will use it instead of making a route that's not used as much every 30 minutes or 60 minutes. So, um, and the opportunities would be less traffic and a more, more efficient service. But, um, I didn't know, Michael, that analysis had been done.
Uh, it was during, quite, when we were discussing the BEBs in depth. And it's based on, um.
This last few years?
Yeah, I'll, I'll share with everybody.
I just won't pay any attention.
Yeah, sounds like that's an opportunity as well. Kind of pull that back open and take a look at it. Yeah. Super reflective, thank you. Here's what I'm going to do. I, um, going to ask you to take a five-minute break. There's no more absorbing information today, so that's like amen to that, all right? There's no more, I'm not asking you to absorb anything. Uh, I will ask you to do one more thing, uh, but it's going to more be reflecting on some of the information you took down regarding education, okay? Uh, but you will not have to absorb any more information for the rest of the day. And by the time we're done, that's still going to get you out early. So, a win all around, sounds like some good trade-offs, right?
Yeah.
So, good, take five-minute break. I'm going to ask you to come back. I'm going to ask you to do something with some of the information you took down regarding education. Do not absorb any other information, and I will get you out of here early. Enjoy. All right. What I'm going to ask you to do is, um, remember at the very beginning? I was like, write this down, write, write this down. Uh, what I'm going to ask you to do is I want you to reflect on what you've heard about education. And I want you to write down, uh, per, and I'm going to ask you this question for, I'm going to ask it to you for three sections, per impact area. So, education, one of the impact areas was financial operations. And you all heard where financial operations is, what's in the way, and what could be in the way. What I want you to do is regarding financial operations, um, if you could write down, and this is where we work together alone, so I'm going to ask you to review on your notes, reflect on your notes, and I'm going to ask you to write one answer down, okay? Um, it is one thought and one idea on a rectangle posted that's in front of you with your Sharpie. And I would like you to write down what is one tension that you heard regarding education specifically around financial operations. Going back, you all heard where it is, what's in the way, what could be in the way? What is one tension you heard regarding education in the fin, in the impact area of financial operations? What is one tension that you heard? If you could, Sharpie, rectangle posted, do your best to write legibly, just do, do your best. But it's regarding financial operations under the strategic priority of education. What is one tension you heard? And when you have it, just hold it up. All right. Awesome. Great. I'm going to ask you, um, to think, uh, let me ask you real quick. Do you all want to go left and right, or do you want to go down? So do I talk about the trade-off of financial operations or do we go into the tension of facility development and construction? Would you like to go this way or go down? Down, sticking with the same category, all right? So financial, education, financial operations, what was a trade-off that you heard regarding financial operations, uh, around financial operations and with the strategic priority of education? What is a trade-off that you heard regarding financial operations? Remember one thought, one idea? And you're doing two next, try to write legibly, but also in a way, um, where others could understand, what you're, what you're saying. What was one trade-off you heard regarding financial operations in connection to the strategic priority of education?
Well, I have to use it in emails more than I think.
Here you are. DA, you are. Three, we're looking at, one more, two more, two more up there? One trade-off that you heard regarding financial operations.
You would.
In connection to the impact there at education, a trade-off that you heard.
Wait, was that, we were just supposed to write a trade-off?
Yes.
One trade-off.
Yeah, one trade-off, yep.
I'm losing track of it.
It's all good. I'm getting, look, don't you worry, I'm getting you out of here soon.
You know, I'm losing track of tensions versus trade-offs.
And, and so feel free, I have mine up here as well. Like, feel free to also, like, reference, it's why I wanted to have the definitions up here. So feel free to take a look at that. I have it up here as well. Um, again, reflect on your notes as well, not only reflect on the definitions, but maybe something you wrote that sparsened interest. Okay. Strategic priority, uh, education, um, regarding the impact of financial operations, what was an opportunity? What was an opportunity? Actually. Actually. No, let's don't write that yet.
Yeah, 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 don't write that yet.
I'm going to move you on to the next thing, I have an idea. Um, so it's nothing to make you do anything today, but don't worry. Uh, all right, regarding, uh, strategic priority education, I want you to think about the tension you may have heard around facility development and construction. Regarding the strategic priority of education, what is a tension? Tension that you may have heard regarding facility development and construction? Um, regarding the strategic priority of education with the impact area of facilities management and construction, what was a trade-off that you heard? Feel free again, review your notes, reflect, write, one thought, one idea. Regarding education, the impact area of facility development and construction, what is a trade-off that you heard?
I don't remember what I put.
As a trade-off? Or you don't remember?
I don't remember the ones I've already sent up there, and so I feel like I've written a couple of them twice.
Yeah, it's okay.
And this is, we're talking facility development.
That's the trade-off.
Yes.
And is the trade-off of facility, this is kind of your target, your topic area right there. Facilities development and construction. Again, feel free to review your notes. Reflect on them. Write something. This is your trade-off regarding facility development and construction under the strategic priority of education.
I'm just waiting.
Okay. All right, we are in the third impact area of facilities maintenance regarding strategic priority of education. What was a tension? Review your notes. View your notes, reflect on your notes, and then write one thought or idea regarding facilities maintenance.
You already, you already.
She's writing right down.
I also did that thing, that little consider where they start writing to far in the center and they write on the space by the end.
Regarding the impact area of facilities maintenance under strategic priority of education. What is the, what is the intention that you heard? Doubtful, I'll be able to determine which sticky notes are mine. All right, I was preparing for the next one. Uh, education, impact of facilities management, what's a trade-off? Again, and, and if those two definitions are, are still, are getting a little blurry at this point, feel free to look at this card, uh, look at your notes also. Review your notes, reflect on them, view the definitions, reflect on them.
What was this one again, education?
It is education still, and the impact area of facilities maintenance. What is a trade-off that you heard when they wrote down regarding facilities maintenance? And again, I, I really urge you to don't reinvent the wheel. You all took some amazing notes. Broke down, you absorbed some great information, just find your answers in there. Perfect. I want to try one more round of this, but I want to try with homelessness, and then, again. Regarding homelessness, um, housing, one of the impact areas of homelessness, what was a tension that you heard or wrote down? Uh, I'm not going to, I don't have these up because I'm asking you to do it on the fly. So, one thought, review, reflect, uh, on your notes. Strategic priority of housing, the impact area of homelessness. What was a tension that you heard in the room? Feel free to read your notes. Do not want you reinvent the wheel, don't do that to yourself, you took some great notes. Strategic priority of housing, impact area of homelessness. What was a tension that you heard? Strategic priority of housing. So those have to do with housing, and then James and Ashley, kind of what is and where it's going, they kind of talked about these areas. All right. Okay. Strategic priority of housing, impact area of homelessness, what was a trade-off you heard? Again, review the card, uh, review the definitions to help. Do not put yourself to work where you don't have to. What are the definitions again? Don't even ask that question, they're right in front of you. What is a trade-off you heard regarding homelessness? All right, a trade-off you heard regarding the impact of homelessness? All right. What is a tension that you heard regarding the impact of affordability of housing for the full community? That was one of James and Ashley kind of spoke to it. James like, here's where it is, Ashley like, what's in the way? Regarding housing as our strategic priority and one of our impact areas is affordability of housing for the full community. What is a tension that you heard? A pull between competing needs, values, or priorities that coexist and require thoughtful balance. A tension that you heard regarding affordability of housing for the full community? Yeah, I was saying whoever wrote that, it's a, it's a neat way to capture that information as well. I've seen where people just write the two things that are like pulling against one another, you know, as well. Um, like, it's these two. So, good, good. All right, the impact area of affordability of housing for full community, what is a trade-off you heard? Trade-off being a choice to prioritize one thing over another, knowing something is gained and something is given up. What's a trade-off that you heard when we were discussing the affordability of housing for the full community? What's a trade-off that you heard? A choice to prioritize one thing over another, knowing something is gained and something is given up. What is a trade-off you heard regarding affordability of housing for the full community? What is a trade-off that you heard? Okay, last round. The impact area regarding production and preservation of affordable housing. This is regarding our strategic priority, who care about housing in general. What are the impact areas? Production and preservation of affordable housing. What is a tension that you heard in the room when we were talking about its current status? Tension being a pull between competing needs, values, or priorities that coexist and require thoughtful balance. A tension you heard when we were discussing the production and preservation of affordable housing. If it's helpful, just write the two things you think are pulling at each other. The two tensions.
This is the tension category?
Yes, ma'am, yep. Yep, this is tension regarding of production and preservation of affordable housing. And these would have been illuminated during the where it is, and what's in the way, and what could be in the way. A tension regarding production and preservation of affordable housing. All right. Last category. Um, still talking about the production and preservation of affordable housing. What was a trade-off that you heard mentioned? Trade-off being a choice to prioritize one thing over another, knowing something is gained and something is given up. What is a trade-off that you heard when we were talking about the production and preservation of affordable housing? This is the trade-off that you heard when we were talking about where it is, what's in the way, what could be in the way? Regarding production and preservation of affordable housing. Thank you for these thoughtful answers, thoughtful notes. Perfect, okay. Love it. You all just got a huge jumpstart on tomorrow, so thank you for that. I appreciate it. Um, huge jumpstart. Um, all right, before I let you go, two things, okay? Uh, one, thanks for that. Uh, wanna rewind a little bit of kind of what was, what you all did today. Uh, so, we're, I wanna remind you, we're, we're after this question, right? What would it look like if city council human-centered designs could better inform and direct the city manager's office toward strategic impact? Uh, these beautiful groups of humans are gonna have to create some strategies to make this impact happen. Uh, but there's some information, some direction, and some measuring that we need from you in order to do that. Where are we going and how do we know we got there? Um, and, okay, so, we are in pursuit of this, and we are not answering today, probably by end of tomorrow. But, it's all about direction setting to help inform decision-making. You all are helping set direction, where are we going and how we know we got there, to inform strategic decisions, um, as well. So, uh, again, today is around where it is, and, uh, here's what you did today, okay? So, you are deeply intentional in receiving and internalizing where it is. It being strategic priorities, which is what you said you care about. Right? So you are deeply intentional in receiving and internalizing information around our strategic priorities, what we said we care about. Uh, our community survey, how we know we're doing it well or not, the community will tell you, right? You absorb that information as well. You're deeply intentional with absorbing that information. Um, the financial budget, resources for the impact of, on what we care about. You absorb that information. You're also deeply intentional with receiving and internalizing where it is. It being the top strategic priorities, which are impacts that need immediate attention. That's a lot. But, then you used, um, and completed six different design exercises to do some things as well. Three of them, you used to synthesize your insights into understanding, respecting, and valuing, and to concisely share those observations with your peers. Then you used another design exercise, and it was to help identify tensions, trade-offs, and opportunities related to the top strategic priorities that need immediate focus. That's a lot, you all, I guess, that's a lot. You all did that. You did it in about seven and a half hours, but we've had breaks, we've had lunch, and I'm letting you out early, so you did it in like six and a half hours. That's a lot in a little bit of time, right? I would agree. Do you agree to that?
Yeah.
Yeah, you all should celebrate yourselves.
Yeah.
Processing of information, and maybe you're just too tired to clap your hands. I will celebrate you. That is a lot of information to deeply internalize, synthesize, and communicate out loud. And you did it in like six and a half hours. That's, that's no joke. Uh, it can be done. Remember I told you we're gonna go deep and wide quickly? There was a lot of information, and we covered a lot of ground in a short period of time. Sounds like we went deep and wide. So, last thing before we go. Um, tomorrow is gonna be about what is and what could be. We're all about exploring. You captured a lot of understanding today. Uh, that's why I was like, review on that, reflect on that, write that down. Um, 'cause I need to, I need you to understand where all of these things are. Um, so, we can potentially explore what is and what could be. Right? To explore what could be in these areas and not have a deep understanding about them. We, remember we talked about that at the very beginning? What would it look like to go explore a couple ideas and not have any deep understanding? Today, you spent that time deeply understanding. To help inform as we go and explore what potentially could be. Cool? With me? Awesome. Um, and tomorrow is about opportunity and possibility. All right. Uh, lastly, remember where you're going for direction setting? Day one, where it is. Day two will be about exploring what is and what could be. Eventually helps us with you being able to, to your last, some direction for, uh, these beautiful people. So, day two was exploring, um, is built on day one's understanding. You built a toolbox. That was all your understanding. We're gonna use that tomorrow, okay? Um, so, I will see you tomorrow, but before you go, Sam, close us out with any thoughts, uh, charges to action, um, you know? Tell everybody to get a good night's rest and wear some comfortable shoes.
I did say that for the last night, so I'll say it again. Um, definitely just wanna just react to the idea that we got through a lot of information. I took a lot of notes, as I usually do whenever you all were talking. Uh, so I'll be able to use that with you later on, and it will help frame where we go next. So when we wrap up tomorrow, I'll talk to you a little bit more about that, so, thank you.
All right, good to see you.
So, do we leave these things here?
Please leave that, yeah, because I'm gonna actually ask you to dig into your understanding toolbox again. So, please leave.
Yep, do we need to close the meeting or?
Oh, there we go. Is there formal closing?
We can recess until tomorrow, yes.
So moved?
We're recessing till tomorrow, yes.
Yes.